Thank you all so very much for attending today's school board meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order promptly at 10 o'clock. We do not have any amendments to the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to make a notice for my colleagues. While it is true that we have the one non-consent agenda item, I'm going to take the speakers for that item in the way that we traditionally do. Any items that you want to speak to that are on the agenda, you speak to at that appropriate time, and we'll follow the agenda that way. So I just wanted you guys to know that in advance. Speakers, because we have so many that have signed up for today, I am going to strictly adhere to the three-minute rule because we want to hear from those that have come today. So at the three-minute mark, please don't take it as not being patronly, but if you will please discontinue speaking and we'll allow the next person to come up. Ms. Ann Semenetti will call two speakers at a time, so you'll be able to go from one podium to the next. All right? At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so very, very much. Today, we have our invocation by Pastor Kenny McNatt from Seminole Assembly Ministries. Thank you so much for being with us on today. Following that will be our pledge of allegiance, and then we have the wonderful presence of Largo High Chamber Choir. They will perform the National Anthem, and then their second song will be introduced by their choral director. So if we could all stand.
Fathers, we come to you today, we thank you for this moment. This is a moment unlike any other, and as it comes and goes, what we do with it is important. And so we invite your presence in this place today to grant wisdom and direction to the men and women who serve on this board, that the decisions that they make will have a lasting effect on the children, the teens, the adult learners in Pinellas County. So we ask you for your blessing on them today. We also pray for our students who are in school today. We ask that you would be with them, keep your hand on them, that they might grow in wisdom and knowledge. And we ask you to be with our teachers, our heroes in the classroom. Would you be with them today and bless them as they teach? We thank you for it. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we are the Largo High School Chamber Choir, and we are honored to be here. Our second piece that we will perform for you guys is titled "Through the Dark" by Andrea Ramses. It is an adaptation of writings by Helen Keller.
Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You may be seated.
Once again, we are the Largo High School Chamber Choir, and we are honored to be here. Our second piece that we will perform for you guys is titled "Through the Dark" by Andrea Ramses. It is an adaptation of writings by Helen Keller.
Music that beats with the pulses of God, music that beats with the pulses of God, music that beats with the pulses of God, music that beats with the pulses of God. The light in my darkness. The voice in my silence. Silence, silence, silence. I feel the flame of eternity in my soul. It shall give me vision of thousands full. 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 Vision.
Beautiful. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Once again, thank you so very much to each and every one of you. That song, for me, just set the pace for today. So thank you for such a calming song and one that means so much. Thank you so much to your director. You have an awesome, awesome leader. And to those of you that are seniors who've acknowledged that, to me, I'll see you in Thank you. That was beautiful. Okay, gotta get myself together. There is a renewed focus on career and technical education, both in Florida, in the Florida Legislature and across the nation. Pinellas Technical College has been providing high-quality technical education since 1962 and is a vital part of the Pinellas County School District. Let's meet some of the students working to secure their career in a year.
I didn't feel like I was really prepared to go to work after my four-year degree. I had a bunch of knowledge up here and there, and a little bit of this and a little bit of that. So when I actually did get in my field, I had to relearn everything. The difference here is I feel like I'm actually getting training for what I'm going to do. I have confidence that when I, you know, finish this program, I'm going to be able to do the job that I set out to do. And that's the big difference to me, and I love it. I prefer this. I prefer it.
I've gotten job opportunities. I've gotten knowledge. I've gotten friends as well. I've gotten a lot of things from this place, you know? Knowledge, just about everything, about myself as well. I felt like I've become a lot more mature that I'm here, so it's gotten me a lot of things.
Being that it's a technical college, you have more hands-on, direct with the teacher. They're right there getting dirty with you, no matter whatever course you're in.
The structures will literally bend over backwards to help you get where you want to go and ultimately get you the skills you need to get back into the workforce and be making a living. That's the beauty of it.
We have teachers here that actually care, that want to see you succeed, that want to see you grow, you know, what you're trying to do.
I like definitely kind of the more one-on-one you get. You're not at a large university where you're just kind of a number. Your teachers can get to know you better, and when you need help, it seems a little easier to get it.
So when we are hiring graduates or current students from the medical billing program, we find that they are more so the eager employees that want to jump in, get hands-on, and really be able to grow because they're getting, you know, the knowledge in this program that they can immediately translate to the position.
Pinellas Technical College students do come out ready to work.
I'm super proud. I've loved this school. I want to be involved with the school long after I graduate.
It has given me purpose again. It has shown me a new path in life.
I came here for an opportunity to be great, and here I am. I'm about to graduate, and I think I have reached that goal. I feel like I have learned a lot.
The greatest advantage that I've had is going and getting a job before I finish, and like, we already have most of our credentials already, and just to bring that where we are is like, okay, there's not a whole lot we can teach you guys, we can throw you right on the line. You know, you can start training other people.
Just to be able to get through it quickly and then get on and get into the workforce and start making some money and doing what I set out to do is huge.
Pinellas Technical College, both the St. Petersburg campus and the Clearwater campus are doing a fabulous job, and I don't know if Mr. Mark Hunt is sitting back there. There he is. But thank you so much for all of you. Just remember, Pinellas Technical College, it's your first choice. All right, moving right along, we have the introduction of professional and community organization representatives by our very own Lisa M. Wolf, the Public Information Officer.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grego and staff, it is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. Representing the Pinellas Educational Support Professionals Association, Nellie Hennessy. With the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Mike Gandoffo. Representing the Pinellas County Council of PTAs, Cindy Aaron Zeller. And with the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Maria Cantonas. Members of the media in attendance today are Megan Reeves of the Tampa Bay Times, Anne Carson Chambers, and Brad Davis of ABC Action News. Today, we will have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibilities Committee. Please welcome, from Largo High School, Amanda Sanchez and Riley Henson. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the school board and Dr. Grego. My name is Amanda Sanchez, and I'm honored to represent Largo High School this morning. I am a proud member of our Scholar Program. Our school also contains two magnet programs, Excel and IB. We have many things to be proud of that I would like to mention. Riley and I are members of the last class to be part of the temporary campus as we moved into our beautiful new school. I chose Largo because I was zoned there and I was part of the childcare program. We have many programs which allow scholars to receive multiple certifications. These include automotive, drafting, welding, food science, childcare, and business programs. An expectation for a Largo High graduate is to have at least one certification, pass an AP assessment, pass a dual enrollment course, or pass an IB assessment. We have many outstanding athletic and arts awards winners each year. Our choral madrigals earn superior ratings each year, along with other chorus and thespian programs. We also have the Band of Gold and Flag Corp., which receive awards each year. One of the things I am most proud of is to represent Largo High as one of the nominees for the Maria Edmunds Hispanic Awards. There are so many outstanding scholars, and I am honored to be chosen. I currently attend Jacobson Technical High part-time, and I'm part of the nursing program. I am also in dual enrollment courses at SPC. I am looking into the medical field, and my experience at Largo High has helped me make specific choices for my career path. We are told each morning that we are on a mission. The mission is graduation. And thanks to Largo High, I am proud to tell you that on May 24th, this mission will be completed, and I will begin a new mission at the University of South Florida.
Good morning. My name is Riley Henson, and I'm honored to be here and to be representing Largo High School. I've been attending Largo High School all four years, and I'm a part of the IB program. I originally chose Largo High School due to the amazing programs that they offer. We have IB, Excel, and the Scholar Program. My brother graduated in 2016 from the IB program, and hearing his experiences also attracted me to this school. Looking back at my last four years, I'm so thankful that I chose Largo High School. One thing that is special about this graduating class is we were the last group of students that experienced the temporary campus, or we like, what we like to call, portable city. I have been able to see and be a part of the development of our new school. We have grown from 1,500 students from my freshman year to now, coming next year, almost 2,000 students. I was a part of the varsity swim team for four years and was honored to be captain this year. I also was on the varsity soccer team for three years. This year, we made it to state's final four, and each year, we're getting closer and closer to bringing that state title home. Apart from my experiences with athletics, our football team is two-time defending district champions. Largo High School offers over 50 clubs, which allows scholars to become more well-rounded and express their creativity. We have multiple honor societies for scholars, one being National Technical Honor Society, introduced last year. I'm a part of National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society, and through these clubs, I've made new friends and new experiences. Largo High School was the first school in Pinellas County to implement LEAP Tampa Bay, which is a college access network, which will help our scholars as they move through the process of applying to post-secondary education. Largo High School places a high bar in regards to academic expectations, and we just learned this past week that a junior in IB, Jacob Harrison, received a perfect score of 1,600 on the SAT. Largo High School has an academic team that has been undefeated for the past three years as well. Largo High School prepares students for their future and sets them up for success. Several scholars moved on to four-year universities, including IB leagues, technical colleges, community colleges, or enroll into the military. Last year, our graduation rate was 91%, and this year, we are determined to make it 93%. I'll be forever grateful for my teachers and the time and love they give to their students every single day. I have built relationships with all my teachers, and I feel safe knowing that they want me to succeed. Every experience made within the walls of this school have helped shape me into who I am today. I will take everything I've learned and apply it to my life forever. I am proud to be a Largo Packer. Thank you.
And we have their principal here with us, Dr. Bradley Finkbeiner. So thank you so very much. Great job, students, and you're well on your way. Thank you. Moving on to our special order agenda, presentation of the proclamation designating April 2019 as National Autism Awareness Month. Dr. Grego.
Yes, Madam Chair, and school board members, and to the general public, April is National Autism Awareness Month, and to present this proclamation, I'd like to call upon Lynn Moat, our Executive Director of Exceptional Student Educators Education, and also take a moment and thank all of our exceptional student educators for the work that they do with our students, not only with autism, but all students with disabilities. And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Grego. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Grego, staff, and community members. In the 1970s, the National Autism Society named April as National Autism Awareness Month in order to create awareness about autism. The purpose of this awareness is to educate the public about autism issues within the community, to promote acceptance of individuals and families with autism, and to recognize those that serve students with autism. Autism Spectrum Disorder is estimated to be the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States by the Center for Disease Control. Autism Spectrum Disorder is complex and affects 1 in 59 children in the United States. Boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls. Characteristics of Autism Spectrum Disorder present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in lifelong impacts of an individual's ability to learn, develop rewarding relationships, and understand verbal and nonverbal communications. Our youth with autism are individuals first and foremost with unique strengths and abilities. Pinellas County Schools proudly serves 1,679 students with the disability identification of autism. Students are served through a continuum of services and supports in inclusive, self-contained and center schools. We are pleased to recognize this April as National Autism Awareness Month. To celebrate, the district has provided suggestions to schools to engage their communities and to raise awareness. These resources are easily accessed on the ESE Department page on the Pinellas County Schools website.
Thank you so very much. Do we have a motion with a second for the reading of the proclamation?
Yes. We adopt.
Second, and Ms. School Board Member Carol Cook is going to lead it for us. Thank you.
Proclamation for the month of April, National Autism Awareness Month. Proclamation by the Pinellas County School Board. Whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, affecting more than 3 million people, and whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone, and whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, interventions, and therapies that are vital to the future growth and development. And whereas this effort will bring awareness to our schools, community, and around the country of the honor to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. Now therefore, we, the school board of Pinellas County, Florida, do proclaim April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month in the Pinellas County Schools.
Thank you very much. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you so very much. Next, the presentation of proclamation designating April 2019 as National Occupational Therapy Month. Dr. Grego.
This is only appropriate as we recognize our occupational therapists. We have 60-some-odd plus their assistants, and so just a really strong shout-out to the work that they do every single day with our students. And Ms. Moat oversees the occupational therapist also, so she, that's why she is still there. Go ahead. You're welcome.
So April is recognized as National Occupational Therapy Month, sponsored by the American Occupational Therapy Association. Occupational therapists play an important role in supporting student achievement. Occupational therapists in our schools assess and treat students ages 3 to 22, whose disabilities limit their fine motor, visual motor, daily living, and organizational skills. Occupational therapists teach students skills to improve functional performance across all domains to support their learning. Pinellas County occupational therapists proudly serve 2,449 students ages 3 through 22. We are pleased to recognize this April as National Occupational Therapy Month.
Thank you so very much, and I believe we have School Board Member Nicole Carr, who will read the proclamation for us. Do we have a motion, please, to accept?
No motion.
Is there a second?
So proclamation for the month of April, National Occupational Therapy Month. Proclamation by the Pinellas County School Board. Whereas Pinellas County Schools encourages options for an active and healthy lifestyle, and whereas, in the best interest of the public, occupational therapy should be provided by a licensed occupational therapist to improve fine motor, visual motor, and daily living skills, so all students have access to the curriculum, and whereas, through a national effort, community members are encouraged to join together to raise awareness of the importance of occupational therapy. And whereas, this effort will bring awareness to our schools, community, and around the country of the roles of occupational therapists in schools. Now therefore, we, the school board of Pinellas County, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National Occupational Therapy Month in Pinellas County Schools.
Thank you so very much. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you all so very much, and thank you for the hard work that you and your department are doing for our students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to public comments. Ms. Ann Semenetti will call your names. Again, we do have two podiums. If you could speak into the microphone so that we can hear what you're saying, that would be fabulous. And again, we will really stick to the three-minute time limit because we want to hear from everybody that's here today, okay? Also have to say, no clapping, but you can do like this, or do like this, you know, or say, okay, but no clapping. Thank you so very much.
Board members and Dr. Grego, we have six speakers signed up on specific agenda items this morning. Our first two are Keith Bylander on non-consent number one and Casey Kane on non-consent number one.
Good morning, School Board. I'm Keith Bylander, Clearwater, Florida. In 1971, musician John McLean in the song "America Pie" referred to an event in which Buddy Holly, the Big Bopper, Ritchie Valens died in an airplane crash in 1959. It became known as the day the music died. The day we lost Alicia Nelson has evermore been known as the day innocents died in the community of Palm Harbor, Ozona. November 4th became a day everyone in that 1960 community would forever remember. With her loss, the community of free-roaming, happy children halted. No longer was it okay to cut across Allen Grove to get home, play in the creek, swim in blue sick, fish from Crystal Beach Pier, and for even some, walk home alone from school. On that terrible day, Alicia was hurrying to school after an early morning visit to the orthodontist so she would not miss PE second period. She loved anything sports, from soccer to Chinese jump rope. She loved these times with her friends, friends who 30 years later would charter a charity. The Alicia Nelson Greatest Wish Foundation is dedicated to the furtherance of her love and passion for education, sports, scouting, animals, and help children with special needs have the opportunity to, as they say, let kids be kids. You're going to hear from many of these almost 50-something-year-old children who were her friends, classmates, teammates, Girl Scout troop members, neighbors, and all... her friends, classmates, teammates, Girl Scout troop members, neighbors, and also from this PE teacher. The children were loved by the school. We were not only teachers Monday through Friday, but we were coaches, referees, snack persons, and fans on Saturday at the Palm Harbor Youth Recreation Field. Some were even their Sunday school teachers and youth leaders. For Alicia Nelson, for her family, for the friends, for the community of Palm Harbor, Ozona, our greatest wish is that school be named for Alicia. I'm looking forward to seeing each of the School Board members at the dedication ceremonies for the Alicia Nelson Elementary School.
Hello. Hi. Thank you. I appreciate it. I know it's passionate.
Good morning, Board members. Thank you for having me. My name is Casey Kane. I come to you as the Chairman of the Palm Harbor Chamber of Commerce and the Vice Chairman of the Palm Harbor Fire and Rescue District. As a person who represents the majority of the Palm Harbor community, I felt it necessary to come and address you, as a board, with the wishes of our community. As a community organization, we actually petitioned hundreds of residents and business owners in our community to find out what their feelings were on renaming Palm Harbor Elementary School, Alicia Nelson Elementary School. By a three-to-one margin in that petition, we found that it was overwhelmingly supported that this is the right thing to do at the perfect and right time. You, as a board, have the opportunity to fulfill a long-awaited promise, but also to remember the name of a young lady who has meant so much to so many in this community, and it's a great thing to do for our community. Our organization has rallied around this family because they have done so much, not only for our Palm Harbor community, but for Pinellas County as a whole. I believe that this is the way to go. Our community has spoken, and you guys have the opportunity today to fulfill that promise and to make sure that Alicia's greatest wishes and also those of Palm Harbor's are fulfilled today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For those of you that are standing around, we do have, thank you so much, we have seats here up front. We want to make sure we're in compliance with the Fire Marshal and everything else, so I know you may not want to sit to the front of the class, but we do have seats up here up front. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Next speakers, please.
Our next two speakers are Michael Levin for consent number eight and Bob Engel for non-consent number one. Good morning.
My name is Michael Levin. My son just started attending Largo IB. It is a wonderful program. It's a challenging program. I'm sure those of you that were listening to the previous speakers, it's a very demanding program. They expect a lot. They expect AP certification. They expect technical certification. I'm here specifically because, if I understand correctly, on item number eight, they're looking to move the bell times of the high school out a half hour earlier, and I just really can't...
Sir, it's later.
It's later.
It's not earlier, later. They'll go to school later.
Great.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you got me nervous because the paper's here, and I'm like, oh, Lord.
Yeah, this is what happens when your wife wakes you up after you flew all day yesterday and says, "You need to go down there and talk to them." I'm sorry, what would the times actually be?
I believe it's seven twenty. Mr. Clint Herbert, can you please?
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five.
I'm sorry, seven twenty-five to one fifty-five.
Okay. That's, isn't that the current?
No. The current time is seven twenty to one fifty-five.
I see. I apologize for taking up your time. Thank you.
No.
But thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Yeah. Coffee on me, nine to seven. Coffee on me. Ooh, next speaker, please.
Good morning, School Board members. Good morning, Dave and Wendy Nelson, Jeff, his wife Debbie, and all of the family members and friends of the Nelson family. Do I get his minute and a half that he blew away? I don't know. My name is Bob Engel. I'm a Pinellas County resident, grew up here, went to high school here, had my construction company here for thirty-eight years. We built a lot of schools for the Pinellas County School Board, a lot of additions, a lot of main, brand-new schools, including Sawgrass Lake Elementary School, Marjory Killen-Rawling School, Oldsmar Elementary School. And in that time, we just had a great relationship with the Pinellas County School Board, but one of the significant schools that we worked on was the Palm Harbor Elementary School. We constructed the last major addition at that Palm Harbor Elementary School, Lisa School. I'm here today to support the naming of that school for Alicia. I met the Nelson family back probably in the mid-seventies. Wonderful people. Those of you that know them, they're just incredible. They give, and they give, and they give, and they ask for very little. Dave and Wendy had a very small construction company at the time. He's going to kill me when I tell you the name was Davco, and he left, but I still remember that. And it was so small that Wendy even drove the dump truck occasionally to get their jobs done. They're just wonderful people. They have moved that company on and on through Dave's shepherding, and now his son Jeff has moved that company on to be a multimillion-dollar company. They built their home in Palm Harbor. They built their construction company in Palm Harbor. They're absolutely wonderful people, and the Palm Harbor community owes them a great debt of gratitude. So, we're here today, thirty-eight years after the tragic loss of Jeff's sister Lisa and Dave and Wendy's daughter, and here to see if we can't convince Board members to name the Palm Harbor Elementary School in her name. It's certainly appropriate. Jeff, in addition to his duties as head of this huge construction company, father of two, husband, has devoted the last four years to developing the Alicia Nelson's Greatest Wishes Charity. That money goes to the Pinellas Education Foundation and is spread throughout charities all throughout Pinellas County. In that four years, as many of you know, it has raised over a half a million dollars. It's an incredible feat, considering all the other things that Jeff has on his... So, that was way too quick.
Thank you. I know. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
What about the other minute?
Next speaker.
I guess.
Good try. Good try. Next speakers, please.
Our next two speakers are Reverend Niles for non-consent number one and Vicki Schuman for consent number eight. Good morning.
Reverend Timothy Nails could be here today. I was, back in 1977, called to Charlotte, I'm from Charlotte, to Palm Harbor, Florida to establish a new parish, which I did, and in November 1980, Alicia Nelson was abducted riding her bike to school on Fifteenth Street, and her life was taken. The school counselor, Tim Stanbauer, called me, and my wife and I followed through with the family. Her funeral was at my parish. The church was overflowed with people, the entire community, every different religion, what have you. They were all there. At the time, I was involved in establishing a committee for the library and the Youth Recreation League, which both were meeting at my parish. I was appointed chaplain for the newly organized Chamber of Commerce, and both organizations were in full support of naming a school yet to be built or the one on Fifteenth Street, one of those, in Alicia's honor, a hundred percent. The Reverend Art Elbers, who was a member of the Pinellas County School Board, invited me to speak to the two board about the Palm Harbor citizens' full support in naming the school in her honor. Back then, in 1981, the school board was one hundred percent in favor of that. But now, her older school, the one she attended on Fifteenth Street, is being remodeled, and I feel the community fully supports naming it in her honor. Her tragedy brought this newly-formed community in the early eighties together, and is one that cares for one another like I've never seen a community before, and sponsored many educational and recreational opportunities. Her memory is that of a great inspirational civic leader. Please name the school in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board and staff. My name is Vicki Schuman. I attended Pinellas County Schools K through twelve, and now I have two middle schoolers in Pinellas Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about healthy school start times. Teachers who are also parents and fully support the movement cannot attend this meeting to voice their concerns because they are in their classrooms teaching. I'm here today to represent several of them who I call my friends. Pinellas residents raised an eyebrow when Hillsborough County School District instituted a later high school start time for the 2018-19 school year. It was out with much drive from the citizens, but they chose to survey their residents to come up with a solution to serve the masses. Hillsborough is now rolling into their second year of healthier school start times. I hope you will survey the residents you serve and your staff accordingly, and most important, fairly, without an agenda in any wording. Board Member Nicole Carr, I had the pleasure of sitting with you and conversing at an event last fall. I'm enamored by your knowledge and expertise and invaluable stance on this extremely-important movement. Please continue to advocate for our children and students. They are worth it. Board Member Bill Dudley, you don't know me, but you taught me how to drive a car before my father would let me get behind the wheel. If you haven't, if you haven't already, I urge you to research the importance of healthy sleep for teenage athletes. Research is abundant and shows with proper sleep, athletes perform better and have less risk for injury. Sleep is vital to the health and function for everyone. For student athletes, the stress of physical performance and schoolwork may create an environment that affects their sleep. Physical health, mental health, and cognitive health are three areas influenced by the lack of restful sleep, and all play a role in sports performance. Superintendent Grego, you may already know St. Petersburg Mayor Rick Kreisman fully supports a later start time for high schoolers. He told me he dislikes driving his son to school when it's dark. This brings up another point. His bus comes so early, equating to less sleep, that he's driven, which equates to an underutilized morning bus. It reminds me of my own son starting high school in the fall. We will be driving him so he can get more sleep. Yet another underutilized morning bus. It's not about me, my child, or even my children. It's about an equal opportunity for all, not just the ones that can eventually get used to it. A 2011 study by the Brickings Institution found the financial costs were modest compared to potential benefits to adolescent health, conservatively estimating the ratio of benefits to cost is nine to one for later start times, and that disadvantaged students benefited roughly twice as much as advantaged students. This one change can minimize and decrease so many of the issues we continue to face. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to make an announcement. Unfortunately, we've had a technical glitch with the sign-in process, so I've only captured Optimus Schuman for folks that want to speak on any consent agenda item or non-consent number one, which is the naming of the elementary school. So, what I will ask at this time is if your name has not been called and you did sign up to speak under that, please step forward and state your name and what item that you're speaking to, and we'll just do the best we can. I do apologize.
Thank you, Ann, and we do appreciate that, and we will start. I'll just designate from which podium so we can go back and forth, and each person will still receive their full three minutes, and we do apologize for any inconveniences may have caused. Mr. Mark Clutho and then Mr. Mike Gondolfo.
Mark Clutho, Largo, Agenda Item Eight. What do just a few minutes mean? I don't see how this can really count. Number eleven, eight million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Oh, this is bad. Really bad. And both of these, your strategic direction, effective and efficient use of resources. I don't think so. Number twelve, you have this approval of the substantial completion for boiler replacement, and that makes it a learning in a safe environment? How do you figure? And then, this is really good, request approval of substantial completion for windows. Storefronts in a school? At Maduro Beach? Yeah. Those will get blasted out when the Hurricane Michael hits there, I'm sure. And that's learning in a safe environment? Your strategic direction? Yeah, well, those schools, they'll make for the next big Hurricane Michael. Yeah. And this is what your schools bring. Here's the headline from yesterday's paper. "Melting Everest Glacier Exposes Dead Climbers." These sick buildings, belching the carbon, another example of what you're bringing. It's a doggone shame. And again, what you don't get, cause and effect, correlation, ignoring science. You keep ignoring it, and you look at the flooding that's happening up in the Midwest. They say 200 million people in this country are going to be flooded, and it's just started. It's going to get worse. More to come.
Thank you very much. For anyone that's listening, the storefronts that he's referring to, they're not stores. A part of what we are supposed to do based on the new legislation for safety and security of persons, especially our front office staff, is just putting up additional barriers so that that staff is protected and that we are following the statutes that was passed by the legislature for safety for our staff. So, I just wanted to explain that to you guys. So, thank you. Mr. Mike Gondolfo, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Grego and staff. Elementary school teachers will have an extra ten minutes a day with students, according to the proposed plan. With all the demands on time, the teaching bell-to-bell, testing and preparing for tests, and providing time for recess, elementary school has become a sprint to the end of the day. An extra ten minutes is not going to make a big difference, but hopefully, it may provide some breathing room to insert some joy into the classroom. Maybe teachers will use that time to read to students and introduce them to the joy of reading for enjoyment. PCTA understands the incredible logistics involved in making our transportation system work. We fully support providing high school students with a later start time. Pardons to Mr. Herbert and his staff for their Herculean efforts. We do our best to base all our decisions on what is best for the students of Pinellas, and more often than not, that decision benefits our educators. However, we reserve a contractual right to bargain any impact on our teachers caused by increasing the length of the student day. Currently, we are hopeful that the impact will be insignificant. Should the extra fifteen minutes a week of instructional time begin to impede on our teachers' two hours of planning per week outside the student day, we would have to make a demand to bargain. I would ask that you instruct your administrators to ensure that they do not add any more to the plates of teachers... the plates of teachers so as to ensure that teacher planning is not negatively impacted. It is possible to do what is right for students without making life tougher for teachers. PCTA does not oppose this consent item. Thank you for your time, and seeing as I have a little time. I am a resident of Palm Harbor, and speaking as an individual, my family's benefited from the love and caring of the Palm Harbor community. I want to echo everything that anybody from Palm Harbor that stands up today says, and I think you should support whatever it is that they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gandolfo.
I need to make another brief announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
I was advised that the signup went under another date, so I was able to secure it. So you can go ahead and speak, sir, and then I will resume the list.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Vladever, and my wife and children were residents of Palm Harbor for 39 years. We lived in a subdivision called Honeymoon Ridge, which is actually physically adjacent to the building, the high, the elementary school we're discussing. One of my daughters, Julie, is 48 years old. The reason I'm telling you that is that she was a classmate of Elisa's, and she remembers that day. She remembers the trauma. And there are other friends of Elisa that are here. I think they would stand up just to be recognized. These are other people who have also known Elisa. Of course, they had the opportunity, as did my daughter and these people, to go to elementary school, go to the senior prom, high school, college, perhaps graduate, have a family, have successes, have failures. And of course, sadly, Elisa did not. The, the family of Elisa Nelson, I can't speak for them, but they are here, and they certainly ask that the new school be named for Elisa Nelson. Her classmates who are here ask that the school be named for Elisa Nelson. And actually, I think just a great majority of the residents of Palm Harbor ask that the school be named for Elisa Nelson. So I really hope you do consider that, and we're certainly hoping that that will be the result. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Minetti, you want to proceed with the list?
Our next two speakers will be Melissa Gallivan on consent number eight and Kyle Mueller on non-consent number one.
Over two decades ago, doctors began advising schools to eliminate early starting hours for teenagers. Since then, the American Psychological Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, the AMA, CDC, and many more have issued warnings. With your proposed start times today still among the earliest in the nation, they are talking directly to all of you. The former chair of the Pinellas School Health Advisory Board petitioned the board three times in the past to change the start time for high school. No action was taken. Last year, the Tampa Bay Times wrote an editorial titled "Pinellas Bus Schedules Should Not Dictate School Start Times." In it, they said, "The district has said 7:30 a.m. is the best it can do, though Hillsborough County, with far more students, managed to push its first bell back to 8:30 a.m. Yet you are again voting on start times that are among the earliest in the nation. Why?" In an interview after last year's vote to keep an early start time, Dr. Grego said, "I feel like we do need to listen to the customers, the students of what they want. They said 7:20 is great, 7:30, 7:40 is great. Don't go much later than that." There's been no recent student survey, and I have to ask, is this where some of you still are on this issue? If you are, look at the studies and see what time schools started before they shifted later to protect their students. Here's a sample. 7:40, 7:50, 8, 8:05, 7:30, 7:25. It's time to listen to doctors and education specialists and commit now to a start time of no earlier than 8:30 to reduce the risk for depression, suicide, car crashes, diabetes, obesity, academic, athletic, and behavior difficulties, and risky behaviors. Please also note how later start times have positive effects on behavior and academic achievement for disadvantaged students. What if one of them has to catch one of your 5:45 a.m. or 6:00 a.m. buses? We cannot keep in place one more barrier to their success. Later start times benefit the teacher also. For example, in one study, a school went from 7:45 to 8:30. The two years before and after the change were analyzed. Insubordination offenses went down from 690 to 261. Disorderly conduct was down 302 to 131. Teacher timeouts from 456 to 45. In another, researchers analyzed 400 high schools. Students attending schools that started 8:30 a.m. or later were less likely to be suspended. The school leaders didn't just choose to respond differently to disruptive behavior, they prevented it. To quote another mom, "Because of your extreme early start times, more children will be suspended, humiliated in class, made to feel less than, bullied, or even misdiagnosed as ADHD, all because it is so difficult to behave without adequate sleep." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Kyle Mueller. Five generations of my family have lived within a few miles of Palm Harbor. All of us have been affected and inspired by the actions of Elisa Nelson, her family, and how the community has reacted. In front of my children, I was getting very frustrated when I was trying to figure out how to encapsulate 38 years of this experience for you. So my kids gave me some advice about talking today. They said, "Keep it short, give them the good stuff, and remember to say thank you." So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read you the good stuff in the form of a list of the charities that Elisa's greatest wishes supports. Palm Harbor Middle School Library, Ozona Elementary School Library, Rooker Creek Elementary School Library, Palm Harbor University High School Library, Palm Harbor Libraries Children Program, Pinellas Education Foundation Take Stock in Children Scholarship for at-Risk Children, Beth Dillinger Foundation Nourish to Flourish Program for Providing Food to Undernourished Children, Scholarships for Graduating Senior Girl Scouts in the Y-Lawny Community, Make-A-Wish Foundation, Children's Dream Fund, Muscular Dystrophy Association, Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, Fair Happy Therapy Services to Provide Therapy for Children with Special Needs Such as Autism, Sun Coast Voices for Children, Children's Cancer Center, Pinellas Animal Foundation, Sun Coast Animal League, Palm Harbor Parks and Rec Department Sponsorships for Children Who Can't Afford to Participate, Palm Harbor East Lake YMCA Sponsorships for Children Who Can't Afford to Participate, Girl Scouts and Camp Y-Lawny itself, Girls on the Run, Pinellas County Sheriff's Department Victim Services Program, Pinellas County Schools and Education Foundation. Pretty amazing, huh? So thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for doing the right thing.
Our final two speakers this morning for specific agenda items are Debbie Nelson and Jeff Nelson for non-consent number one.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Debbie Nelson. I am the wife of Jeff Nelson, but I was also a 12-year-old girl at Palm Harbor Middle School, and I was Jeff's classmate when Elisa was killed. Sorry. I am reading the beginning of my husband's speech on behalf of him. I don't come to many school board meetings, but I imagine you usually don't get this kind of turnout. It's got to make you wonder how many people would have come if you had the meeting in an evening in Palm Harbor. On behalf of Elisa Nelson's friends, classmates, and family, I want to thank everyone for coming to support her. We are humbled that so many people felt compelled to speak on behalf of Lisa. I also want to set the record straight. It's not the Nelson family that is pushing for this. It's the classmates and the whole Palm Harbor community, and we are so touched that so many people keep Elisa alive in their hearts. What else can I say? If this turnout doesn't convince you that Lisa was one of the most famous people to ever walk the halls of this school, I don't know what will. Receiving well over 300 letters and responses is really impressive in and of itself, but it doesn't stop there. It's not just the quantity that's impressive, it's also who some of the authors are. I have no way of knowing who sent in letters, but I've heard that there were governors and legislators, both former and present, senators, congressmen, an attorney general, a sheriff, a state attorney, and the public defender, and the two of those never agree on anything. I suspect those letters were sent mostly because Elisa inspired a national discussion about victims' rights that led to constitutional amendments in several states, including Florida. But I have also heard about letters from other community leaders, including a trustee for the University of Florida, the Secretary of Education, county commissioners, city councilmen, mayors, retired generals, numerous business leaders, and the list goes on and on. How could someone who had no influence or a leadership position have such public sway? She did, and continues to inspire people from her commitment to help kids who were less fortunate. How else could you explain a charity founded over 35 years after her death could raise over half a million dollars in less than five years, and it's still growing? If you doubt those numbers, just ask Stacy Carlson, who heads the Pinellas Education Foundation, who also sent in a letter of support, who could have not been here due to a schedule conflict. I'm going to let my husband, Jeff Nelson, Elisa's brother, finish, but I want to say really one quick thing. As a mom, regardless of whether or not I married Jeff or not, I know there is some hesitation to name the school an elementary school associated with such a violent death. I truly understand your concern. Because of Elisa's death, not because I married Jeff, because I was a student there, I am an over-the-top, overprotective parent, and Jeff and I personally were not going to tell our kids until they were in high school. We have no intention of doing that, to make this about her violent death. Thank you.
Before I get started, well, first of all, you left, well, you left Donna off the list. She's the classmate who started this whole thing, and according to your procedures, you asked that we have everybody who supports the speaker stand. So if I could ask everybody here who supports naming the school after Elisa's stand-up, please? Okay. Now, I don't know what happened between 1981 and 84 where the Palm Harbor community stood united here, asking the school board to do that. Quite honestly, I don't really care. I think the universe works in a specific way, because I've seen some things over the last 30-plus years regarding Elisa that don't make sense as mere coincidences. I believe that God, the universe, karma, fate, or whatever it is you want to call it, works in a very specific manner with a very deliberate plan. I believe it's more than a coincidence that the other school doesn't bear her name and that we're standing here today. The other school is where she died. This school is where she lived. This school is where she learned, laughed, played, hung upside down on the monkey bars with her friends. I think that's why we're standing here. It's not just a coincidence that there's a literacy academy planned for this school, and it plans to help kids with reading disabilities. If you look at Elisa's memorial mural, you'll notice there's a proliferation of books on it. The very central figure is Black Beauty. That was her favorite book. Lisa was all about reading. She used to put neighbor kids on her bikes, take them down to the book exchange, because we didn't have a library, bring them back, and she had a blackboard in our house, and she would conduct lesson plans to help these kids learn how to read. It's perfect for this. It's not just a coincidence that years ago, before this even was on the table, that Elisa's classmates and friends got together to create a charity that focuses on children and reading. And it's not a coincidence that just when we're starting to talk about, how do we manage this charity when we can't do it anymore, as we get older, that there's a possibility of passing the torch on to Elisa Nelson's PTA. I mean, we've got a charity, we just crossed the $100,000 mark this year. How many PTAs have access to that? Now, I do want to say I talked to Stacy Carlson with Education Foundation, and they are not quite so sure they want to turn over the keys to that yet, but we're going to make sure that Elisa Nelson Elementary gets more than its fair share of what we can raise, the race, and the rest of our stuff. Now, it's also not just a coincidence that every other youth the school board has tried for this property has failed. They tried to sell it to a developer, it didn't work out. Tried to convert it to a maintenance yard, didn't work out. I offered to buy it and give it to the Parks Department. That didn't work out. And it's not just a coincidence that Elisa's friends and classmates set out to change the way she was remembered, and we're sitting here today with the opportunity to do just that. Yet none of these are merely coincidence. I believe it was always meant to be this school. Now, I know that you have a lot of big decisions, a lot of weighty decisions that the board makes, and some of them can be very unpopular, but how often in life are you served up a softball like this? Nobody can disagree with your choice. While somebody may have hoped for a different outcome, once they've heard Elisa's story, it's hard to argue with it. She's got a very unique narrative that nobody at whoever is or was has, and it happened right here in Palm Harbor. Forty years ago, she united a community by how she died, and every single person in Palm Harbor was affected by it. Today, she unites that same community by how she lived. And while it may have started as a tragedy, it is now a story of kindness, generosity, and inspiration to do good by helping others who are less fortunate. You know, Elisa's, isn't that the kind of message we should send our kids? Elisa's greatest wishes motto is helping kids be kids. What better place to do that than the school where she attended? I think we know how these people would vote. I hope you'll be the same.
...issue, and it is very apparent that everyone here, you know, is affirming, or the majority of you here are affirming, but if you could please help us out.
I don't show anyone else on my list to speak for these items, so again, I apologize, and if there is someone, please step forward. It's the best I can do.
What I will ask you to do is go ahead and step forward. I don't want to deny anyone the opportunity to share on today, because I do know that you all took time out of your day to come here. If you don't mind, if you could please make sure you sign those sheet before you leave, if you can, if you didn't already.
I was already signed in, but somehow I got dropped off.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, no problem. I want you to...
Just state your name for us.
My name is Dr. Donna Denatti-Waddell, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the school that we are speaking about today. I hung upside down from the monkey bars and walked the halls with Elisa at this very school. She was my classmate, my friend, and fellow Girl Scout. You will likely hear a lot about how Elisa's death affected our community, and it certainly did, but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about how Elisa's life affects our community today. About five years ago, several of Elisa's friends and classmates, my friends and classmates, came together and decided to find a way to help Elisa be remembered for how she lived rather than how she died. We looked into school naming, we looked into parks. Ultimately, we created Elisa's Greatest Wishes Charitable Foundation to continue her legacy of helping others with the mission of supporting kids in our community with a spirit of compassion, generosity, and empowerment. We reached out to the community, and we're fortunate to be able to partner with Pinellas Education Foundation, which allows us to operate under their 501(c)(3). Among the many benefits of this is the fact that 100% of every single penny we raise goes directly to our cause. For our first fundraiser, we decided to try to have a 5K race. We chose this project because it is a community and family-friendly event, something that just about anyone can participate in, whether they run, walk, or even ride in a wheelchair. Pinellas Education Foundation coincidentally had their own race and were kind enough to give us some pointers. They were encouraging and told us that we could probably raise a couple thousand dollars. So we began planning our first race with the goals of having about 100 runners and to raise a couple thousand dollars. But the community responded very quickly, and on the first day of us announcing this event, we sold out of all of our biggest sponsorships and had to create new ones. Our first race was far more successful than we could have ever expected. We had over 500 runners, 50 volunteers, and we raised over $60,000 that day. This event has enjoyed enormous growing success, and we're coming up on our fifth annual event next month on April 13th. This time, we hope to have over 1,000 runners and raise over $100,000. At this point, we're well situated to meet these goals. It's important to understand that this event has been so successful, not just because people are touched by Elisa's story. Many people from the community did live through this and were personally touched, but many more never knew Elisa or her story, but they recognize the wonderful cause that this event supports. In a time when there's so much adversity in the world, this event allows our community to come together to work for the common good of helping kids be kids. In less than five years, Elisa's Greatest Wishes has raised nearly $600,000, with every single penny going to helping kids be kids. Our list of beneficiaries continues to grow as we do, but it's important to note that the two largest recipients of these funds are Pinellas County Schools and the Pinellas Education Foundation. It is my hope today that I have imparted to you the very important message, that this is not about Elisa...
is not about Alyssa, a kid who died. I graduated from Tarpon High in 1988. There were four more kids in my class who died before graduation. Alyssa was not the only one to die too young, and unfortunately, she was not even the only one from our class to be murdered. And every one of those kids deserves to have their own story and their own legacy. But this today is Alyssa's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Here and then here.
My name is Riley Bryan, and I'm the Program Director at the Greater Palm Harbor YMCA and the North Pinellas YMCA. Alyssa's Greatest Wishes has partnered with the Greater Palm Harbor YMCA and the North Pinellas YMCA for many years. Through their generous donations and support along with the community organizations, we have been able to send hundreds of kids to camp, receive swim lessons, and play sports. Alyssa's name has become synonymous with giving, helping, supporting throughout our entire community. It is for these reasons we at the Y believe the Palm Harbor Elementary School should be named after Alyssa Nelson.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Betsy Rakowski. I am a mother of three that went through the Palm Harbor school system, starting, well, actually, starting at Tarpon Springs Fundamental and ending up at Palm Harbor University High School. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I signed up when I came in, because as I rode down, I thought about the people that might be in the room. Mostly, it might be people that knew Alyssa or knew the family from back in the day, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of people like myself. I have many friends and teachers who now volunteer with the foundation, Alyssa Nelson's Greatest Wishes. And it wasn't because of the tragedy, it was because of what her name stood for now. It's amazing the amount of things that we have seen personally go through, through the Girl Scouts, through the schools, through the libraries, myself and some friends of mine that volunteer at their organizations now, stuffing bags for the races or working on the run. We've seen firsthand what it's done to the community personally, with our peers, with our students, seeing what they're actually receiving back into the community. And I just, although the school, I know sometimes it's hard to think of, name a school when such a tragedy occurred, but I just wanted you to know that throughout the community, there's many, many people who think of the name only for what it's bringing back and what she stood for, and that her greatest wish is of the kids be kids and giving back so that it's not going to administrative this or that. It's actually something that every kid can benefit from. So it's been very compelling for us to be able to help them out. Now I know them, they're friends, and I know the family, but we didn't know the family before. We knew her name and what it stood for in the community and what they were giving back. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay. Thank you all so very much for each and every one of you that spoke, whether it was on the non-consent agenda item or any other agenda item related to our meeting on today. Thank you so much for your patience and for your time and for trying really hard to adhere to the requests from the board. Do we have any unfinished business? No unfinished business. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye as it relates to the consent agenda. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, to the non-consent agenda item, which is to request the approval of the naming of the former Palm Harbor Elementary School site. Dr. Grego?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, and to the board and to the individuals who have come here today. I personally, as the superintendent, want to thank you for being here, because naming a school is a joyous occasion, because it signifies the beginning of an opening of a school. I think for the general public, I do want to review some of the procedures we've gone through, so the general public knows the outreach that we, as a school district, attempted to perform in naming the former Palm Harbor Elementary School. The school, as was mentioned, will open in next school year, 1920, to house a new program, the Center for Gifted Studies and the Center for Literacy Innovation. And members of the public, as represented here today, were invited to submit their suggestions from February 11th through February 25th. School district created an online submission to make it easy, forms, but also allowed anyone that an online submission wasn't appropriate, that they could mail it in in a hard copy to us. A paper form has been, they are and have been received. We also advertised and promoted this recognition and the suggested names through weekly announcements and our local media. I want to thank our media for helping us with that. The PCS Newsroom Story, the homepage, the latest news item, we continued to, we put it on the rotator slide, as you saw, on our own website. We posted it on our PCS Twitter, Facebook, and also our Spanish Facebook pages. We used it on Monday Update. So I know that, and we also put it on Peachjar, that went home to all parents. So at the close of the process, a total of 634 suggestions were submitted, including a large number of duplicates, as you've had in this past workshop. We provided the board this list that you have. And I also want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Ward Kennedy, the area superintendent, who has shepherded this issue, not only the naming of the school, but also the naming of our first principal, and also the construction site, and as we deliver furniture and equipment. This is an exciting time, and certainly to celebrate. Mr. Kennedy will be walking the board through the process that we described during last week's workshop in terms of the voting for the naming of the school. Mr. Kennedy, thank you.
Real quick, before he speaks, if anyone gets up to go to refresh themselves or whatever, we have speakers in the back, so they can hear. They won't be missing out on the conversation and dialogue. I didn't want you to think.
Morning, everyone. As Dr. Grego stated today, board members, you have the opportunity to name the former Palm Harbor Elementary School, which will house our North County Elementary Center for Gifted Students and the Center for Literacy Innovation. This has been an exciting and busy project over the last several months. Mr. Herbick's maintenance crews have been doing a terrific job of preparing the facility for its opening in August. It's truly been a collaborative effort between our, all of our department's facilities, teaching and learning, student assignment, communications, finance, budget, and human resources in order to make this a successful opening. And board, with your approval last month, Hema Adia was chosen to be the leader of this new school. And as I shared previously, we were not looking only for a principal to fill the position, but a principal who'd be the right fit for that school, and we feel Hema is that person. And Hema is here today. You'd stand to be recognized. Hema felt it was important to be here today, of course, but she's been busy at school, extremely active in preparing for the opening, working with all those departments and the crews, renovating the facility, ordering furniture, setting up parent-family tours, working on communications and the school website. So there's a great deal going on. But as Dr. Grego indicated, today is the culmination of the naming process that he described. So in accordance with school board policy 7250, the district has collected and compiled a list of potential names for your consideration. That list was presented to you last week following the workshop and will also be in your folder that I'll be giving with you shortly. Also in that folder, you will find a ballot similar to the one that was shared at the workshop. Shortly, I will ask you to write your preference from the list of the names submitted, or a name submitted by an individual school board member who feels that they have an appropriate name for consideration. Board members will sign not only the preference, but also put their signature on the ballot. When completed, I will collect the seven ballots, and under the watchful eyes of Mr. Kapersky and Mr. Smith, I will tally the votes. If a name receives a majority vote on the first ballot, there will be no further voting will be necessary. If no majority vote, four votes is reached on the initial ballot, we will resubmit for a second ballot. However, no write-ins will be allowed for that second ballot. This process will continue until a majority vote is reached. And when that majority vote is attained by the board, the school will be named after proper board's procedures that Mr. Kapersky will explain at that time or can't explain at that time. Okay? All right, so we will conduct that process right now. Mr. Herbick? Okay, board members, if there are no further questions, at this time, if you would take your, open up your folder. In that folder, you will find a list of the names that were submitted for your consideration. And if you would write the name of the, take out the ballot and write the name of the choice, and then put your signature on it, and we will collect them and tally the votes. Madam Chairperson, at this time, we do have a majority for the vote, and the recommended name for the school is Alyssa Nelson Elementary School.
Just stood up and said, "Thank you. Thank you." "Thank you so much."
They still have to vote.
Now we have to vote. We have to vote. That was phase one. This is politics. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Mr. Kapersky?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's public information anyway. Mr. Kennedy neglected to indicate it was unanimous vote. Seven to zero. So right now, we need to entertain a motion, a second, and have a formal vote.
There is a motion with a second. Ms. Kane, would you like to say something? Okay, so there's a motion with a second. This is just for purposes of comment, not purposes of discussion, but I had a feeling she wanted to say something. Ms. Kane?
Thank you so much. I just want to make note, I am so touched this morning to all of you from Palm Harbor. It's my hometown as well. I've grown up in Palm Harbor. I'm raising my children in Palm Harbor because of the incredible community that it is. And my husband and I are very involved in our community, because we want to continue to see Palm Harbor be a wonderful place to raise families and children. I want to note that heroes are not always measured by what they do in their lifetime, but by the legacy they leave behind. And today, we've seen a legacy of one person, what one person can do in a community to affect the lives of all those around them. And each and every day, I teach my students, and I teach my children and those around me, the world has changed one small voice at a time. So be that voice and make the world a better place. And thank you all so very much for coming today.
I just want to say thank you all so very much for coming and for sharing some wonderful stories about a young lady that I did not have an opportunity to know, but many of us know her story, because unfortunately, we see so many times on the news, individuals who do not hold life as dearly as some of us do. From what I gather, she was absolutely a fantastic person. What I do know is that the foundation is doing and will do some magnificent things when it comes to furthering the education and love of learning and reading for our students throughout Pinellas County, all students. That is what is so important to me, to her family members that are here. Sometimes, things like this dredge up memories that can be painful memories. But I sincerely hope that by every person you see in here today, that every day gets sweeter. Every memory is one to celebrate and know that Alyssa's name will live on every time students walk onto that campus after we take the vote. And I'll leave you with this. It was something that I heard this morning when I got up and was getting myself ready, and I call it my meditation time, and there was a person, I was watching a channel, a specific channel, and the gentleman said that your voice does not have to be loud to be heard. And so that was perfect for me when we had the song. Those students didn't know, but that song just set the tone. It set the atmosphere. The comments from you guys set the tone, set the atmosphere. Comments from our board members again did that, and it just reminded me, her voice may not be loud, but she's speaking very loud. So thank you. Next board? Okay. Any other? Yeah, we're gonna vote. We're gonna vote, but you know, you get to make comments for the good of the order. So anybody else want to comment? Okay, it's all been said. All right. I just had to say that. I'm a weeping willow. All right, so we have a motion with a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Take a breath. Breathe. All right. So we'll move on with our agenda. You're welcome to stay. We would love for you to stay. Moving on to new business items. Items introduced by the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am, Chair.
Do you want to wait until some of them? Well, let's take about a three-minute break, so that those that would like to step out can, and then we'll continue on with our business. Thank you all for allowing us just to take a small little break, so that we had an opportunity for those individuals who wanted to excuse themselves, to be able to do so, we will now just reconvene our meeting, starting with our items introduced by the superintendent.
First of all, Board members, thank you very much for your patience, I think that, as I mentioned, the last time this board actually named a school was Palm Harbor University High School, and it takes a little time and effort, but you could certainly see that the community's behind you, and you behind the community, so thank you for the, for the effort. Couple of things, though, I want to praise our people with, so many great things happening in our school district, I'm going to make this somewhat brief, because we're going to bring back some of these items, for you in a more formal way, but I would be remiss if I didn't state that Linda Burris, who's one of our principals, Largo Middle School, recognized by the State Board of Education, the Commission of Education, is one of the top three finalists in the state for principal, as a, as a principal, I will bring her formally to this board, but I, it's out there in the news, I just want to make that statement too, and you can't say it enough, she's done a fabulous job, and brings a lot of great attention to, to our school district. Also want to praise Gulfport Montessori Elementary, recently featured in the National Blog for Family Engagement, that's the Scholastics EDU, yes, and, and I'm very proud of what Mr. Hathaway is doing, and the AP, and the MTSS coach, and it's a really unified team out there that's, that's bringing in the Gulfport community, as you know, we will be having our evening meetings in Gulfport, they're excited, I'm excited to travel to Gulfport, but what we're also seeing with this reading initiative that they're conducting there is a tremendous narrowing of the achievement gap when it comes to reading, and I'm very thankful for what they're doing as a community, because they're getting involved with their school. The other thing I want to mention, and we'll bring this forward, recently, the Harvard Educational Publishing Group published a book called Show, Tell, Build: 20 Key Instructional Tools and Techniques for Educating English Learners, and, so guess what, in, at your desk area, there's a form, English Learner's Road to Graduation, this was a form that was developed from Dr. Natasha Karak, our own, one and only K-12 ESOL specialist, and is being featured and honored and really praised in the Harvard Educational Publication, the Show, Tell, Build, I will get a copy of that, but it's not often that you're, you're featured in such a prestigious publication, in How to Educate, How to Best Educate Some of Our English Learners. We also were notified, as was mentioned, also notified just a week or two ago, that many of you know that, but we'll be preparing the Tarpon Springs Jazz Ensemble, was one of only 15 jazz bands, and I think we've come so accustomed to listening to their, their excellence, that we just, kind of just rolls off of our tongue, but the fact is, is that over 5,300 schools from the, across the United States registered to go to the, the jazz competition, the Ellington High School Jazz Competition, which will be held in New York City, and 112 schools were selected to audition, and out of the 112 schools, out of the 5,300 original, there are only 15 finalists that are being invited, and guess what, Tarpon Springs Jazz Ensemble, being the first time ever, will be traveling on May 9th through the 11th to compete, and to also be exposed to some of the finest musicians in this country. With this evening, I'm very proud and we're excited to be going to the second Take Stock in Children signing, will be held at the Coliseum in St. Petersburg, we'll, we'll sign with our partners that contribute to the Take Stock in Children Scholarship, and yet hundreds of additional students with the Pinellas Educational Foundation, and we certainly will be joined by Mayor Kreisman there too. Also want to talk about briefly, Nesem Hemed, Hemed, who is a senior at Lakewood High School, was recently honored by the 34th Lightning Community Hero, as you know, the Tampa Bay Lightning have that Community Hero Awards, they provide $50,000, he then turned around and gave half of that to the Advanced Technology Program through the Pinellas Educational Foundation to support Take Stock in Children, once again. He is also a Take Stock in Children scholar from the sixth grade, and we're seeing so many of our students grow up through that, through, through that experience. Also, this past week, it's been a great week of recognitions, but Dixie Hollins High School earned, we were contacted by the College Board, AP Computer Science, the Female Diversity Award, across this country, we are pushing collectively as educators, more advanced placement for computer science, so many jobs, high-paying jobs, but still, across the country, more males are enrolled in, in computer science, so in an attempt to incentivize this, we, we are pushing more capable, highly capable females into the computer science AP course. Dixie Hollins is being one of the highest percentages in the country, was recently recognized, and this is one of those areas, yes, Ms. Flowers, you're alma mater, but it would, they're, for gender parity, and this is an industry that pays extremely high salaries, and we're, we're open access and equity for all. As mentioned earlier in the Largo High School presentation, had the joy of, of shaking Jacob Harrison's perfect SAT score, 1,600, and, and we put that on our, on our webpage, on our front page there too, had the opportunity to run by Largo because of its proximity, and just say hi to him, and talk to him a little bit about his future plans. Ironically, I didn't know it, I just assumed he's a senior, he's only a junior, and so I gave him the good news, he doesn't have to take the SAT anymore, because he can't get any higher score, but he is tremendous, and Coach, you'd be happy that he is a wrestler, and also competes on the swimming team, and does a lot of other things, he's a chemistry tutor, and partners with other students in terms of Science Night, he is really involved in anything, very quiet, unassuming young man, but I tell you what, he totally focuses in on his academics. We also, though, had, and I really believe this is a result, and it will continue to be a result of Elevating Excellence in our, in our school district, but we had three top scores at Lakewood High School, three perfect scores of a 36, Nathan Hamilton, William Klein, and a third student who wanted, didn't want to give his name because he's a little shy with that, but it's all good, we know he got a perfect score, and, and these are students that are really applying themselves to the Khan Academy, and to many of the other opportunities that we're doing to support the students in, in raising the Elevating Excellence concept. Over spring break, our Clearwater High School Civil Rights, they went on tour, this is 24 students from Clearwater High School, participated in the annual Clearwater High Civil Rights Tour, it's a project-based personalized learning experience, they've been doing this for several years, and the trip, as I mentioned, took place over spring break, and they, this was a trip that was totally organized by the students, the arrangements, the speakers, and so forth, and I want to thank, DeMorris, I think, was one of the chaperones, Jennifer Dull was one of the chaperones, and we had a number of people who spent their spring break traveling much of the country with our students, and what a great learning experience. And lastly, and this is another one of those areas that we come to assume was just going to happen, but our, our students, the one, the 13 of them, won the national awards for the, National Award recipients for the 2019 Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards, this is the nation's longest-running and most prestigious scholarship and recognition program for creative teens in grades seven through 12, and to have 13 national awards is unprecedented, there's over 340,000 entries across this country, and so the percentage-wise is, you're lucky if you get one or two, and this district received 13 national awards. There are so many great things happening, especially, we have about eight more weeks of schooling, we have plenty of time, I know we have, you know, we, we get into this FSA testing season, but I want to assure this board that what we're about is this type of information, this is the stuff that really makes schooling exciting, and thank you very much for your, for the board meeting today. That concludes my comments.
I have some comments, do we have any comments to be introduced by the school board attorney?
No, thank you ma'am.
None?
Items introduced by board members, I have school board member Lintino's light.
Well, the crowd has greatly diminished right now, but I'm sure we have other people that are going to speak as well. I wanted to make my report, excuse me, dealing with a cold here, but at the Teacher Appreciation Day at Dunedin Golf, Golf Course, that Eileen, and Carol, and, and it's other people, you were there, and?
Were you there?
Lisa? Yeah, she was there as well, so it was a great celebration of having all our teachers acknowledged for being teachers, we gave lots of presents away, we gave lots of, everybody got a present, I think, you know, everybody that was there, and that was a real good opportunity for everybody to reach out, and to have a real good feeling about that. The ACE Recognition was a wonderful presentation at the Marley Room in Museum of Fine Arts, we had wonderful performers, and it was a wonderful uplifting experience that we had at the Marley Room. The Distant Academy, I went there and had a little visit with the Distant Academy, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later. Gulfport Elementary School, I was there for an hour, working with the children in the kindergarten classrooms, and we're really making some good headways with these kindergarten children. Tiger Bay, there was a very interesting panel that I attended, was last Thursday, the conversation of the panelists all were inclined to be towards affordable housing, and there were two people that were supportive of affordable housing, and then there were two people that were not really, you know, all on board for affordable housing. Our county is getting built out, we're having a difficult time finding lots, and, but when I came back from the Happy Workers School on South 19th Street, I took the time to go down one of the streets, the side streets off of 15th Street, and I went to look where the lot was, where the lot was right next to the freeway, and I think we could find a suitable housing with a Habitat for Humanity, if maybe we could stir up some interest in that regard, I think that would be a good idea, and it seemed like it was adequate for a Habitat for, for a family, for in that, in that place. I was at the, attended a PCTA meeting for the, for the Pinellas County Classroom Teachers Association, which is the PTA, it's not PCTA, but it's the PTA organization. I attended the CASA fundraiser Saturday night, it was a wonderful event, second time that I went, and Take Stock in Children is another organization that I've been supporting, I go there on Monday, and, and actually, the Yes I Can at Banquet Masters on Friday is going to be another event that I'm going to be attending, so, Go Raise, March 30th, and, you know, hope we win, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carr?
Dr. Carr? Thank you, I wanted to express my gratitude for those individuals who are here today, who spoke on behalf of later school start times, without advocacy, we cannot make progress. I am a parent of a high school student, and I, myself, like Mayor Kreisman, woke up extra early to drive him to school, so he could have extra sleep, and now he drives himself, but he, I do support and believe in the scientific evidence and research that says we do need to move our school start times later, so I appreciate the work that Mr. Herbeck is doing with the task force to move us in that direction, so thank you to those of you who came out today. I also wanted to express my gratitude for our area superintendents, who have been determining our allocations, and meeting with our principals, we had that wonderful event to recognize our principals recently, and, you know, a lot to be said when our teaching, Teachers Association President, Mr. Gandolfo, comes to us to express his concerns for the stress of our principals. So, I think it's one of the most difficult and challenging jobs, and I appreciate your support of them, I hope that we continue that ongoing support for our school-based administrators as the time comes when we move into transfer period. I think it's extremely important that folks who are building-level administrators be informed of any decisions that might take place about their movement, so that their staff may also be informed, and is assured to be able to apply for the transfer period. So, I express my gratitude to the four of you who are sitting back there in the back of the room, I'm talking right to you, that, for what you're doing, and the hard work you do in making those very difficult decisions right now, and I hope we continue to support those folks doing the very heavy lifting at the front, in the schools, of our principals and assistant principals, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
Yes, I wanted to talk about the Dual Language Program at Garrison Jones, I visited at that school, I had the opportunity to go to the International Night, I had no idea, as a resident of Dunedin, what the school was doing, and I look at what some of the other schools, like charter schools in this district are doing, and this is a phenomenal program, it has a diverse population, and to see preschool children speaking in Spanish, when that's not their native language, is absolutely incredible. I'd like this district, and I spoke to Dr. Grego, and I'd like to have a discussion at the workshop, to talk about looking at taking this program to an upper level, our middle school and our high school, I think it would be wonderful, another opportunity to give to parents and children that, that district needs, that area needs something like that, and I think this is the perfect opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, Al Rochelle from Bay News Nine highlights an A-plus teacher, and this morning, he highlighted the teacher, the music teacher from Perkins Elementary School, and so I wanted to give a shout-out, as people would say, or kudos, to the music staff at Perkins Elementary School, they also interviewed some of the students, and the students had a chance to talk about why they felt music was so important in their lives, so I just wanted to share that. I want to say thank you to Brandy Williams-Macon, the principal, at the Douglas L. Jameson Junior Elementary Center for Mathematics and Engineering, for inviting me to participate in what they called the Campfire Readings, they had a campfire made of LED candles, it wasn't a real fire, and the little tent things over it that made it look like it was, you know, at a campfire, and flashlights, the kids got to make smores, parents came and participated in activities, they provided dinner to the parents and the children, but it also gave us a chance to read to the children, so that was really fun, Mayor Rick Kreisman was one of the guest readers, as well as staff from the YMCA, so thank you all so very much to each one of the staff there, it was an absolutely wonderful evening. I want to say congratulations to 21 young ladies who were introduced to society at the Ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Essence of Ebony Pearls debutante cotillion. All of the young ladies attend schools in Pinellas County, and a part of their application process is to do community service hours, we also take a look at their grades and their conduct, so I think that the district should be extremely proud to know that we have ladies who are exemplifying excellence, and serve as examples and mentors throughout our community. Last but not least, I just want to remind us to, please don't forget to call your senators, your House of Representative members, there are a lot of bills that are moving, and moving swiftly, some have already cleared, the House, House Bill 7077 is one that has cleared its House Committee, Senate Bill 7030 related to school safety has cleared its committee, the House has already stated that it supports arming teachers, the Senate said, "Hold up, we need to talk more about it," I'm grateful for that, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I, I do not see that as a positive measure. As a matter of fact, yesterday, As a matter of fact, yesterday, there was a, not in Pinellas County or Florida, but there was a substitute teacher who was subbing in a classroom, had a gun on his person in a first-grade classroom, and the gun discharged. So I'm not saying that that will happen all the time. I'm using that as an example that we don't, I desire not for that type of activity to go on in a place of learning. I also want to say super kudos to the Florida School Board Association. Andrea Messina, who is the executive director, did a video snippet, if you will, where she talks about the movement of different bills and whatnot that's going through and FSBA's Position and Stand, which is a organization that we are a member of. And I thought it was an excellent presentation. It was not emotional. It was all based on fact. Here is what the bill says. Here is what it does. Enacting it is what this could mean. Here is where you could help in the community if this is an area that you would like to speak on. So I want to say super kudos to them on that. Also, as a reminder for anyone that's listening, if you don't want to sit and watch the Florida Channel, but you want to get bullet points about different legislation that's moving forward, please feel free to visit fsba.org. And on it, it has the information related to the bills that are moving, dealing with mental health, investing in students, providing high-quality education, information regarding the teachers having to pay for the retesting when they're going for their certification. It just has a lot of good information all in one place that you can most certainly look up what's going on with education. And feel free to contact your school board member. Some of us get a little bit more involved than others only because of the committees that we serve on, but by all means, feel free to give us a call. We have a wonderful packet that was put together that we can also provide organizations with so that they can see what our financial position has been from the early 2000s up until now. They can see what our requests are within our district. They can see what it is that we're doing and what we're advocating for as the Pinellas County School Board District. I think it's wonderful. I utilized that at an event that I was at for the Interfaith Tampa Bay. They're now called Interfaith Tampa Bay. I was there. I asked Dr. Grego if he would send me the video that he utilized. And some attendees there really had an opportunity to hear the information about what it is that we're doing, where we stand and the information that we would like to let our legislature know. I think that we're doing a good job in Pinellas County. We understand and recognize that there is work yet to be done and we are doing that work. So thank you so much to not only leadership, but thank you to the teachers who are there with our students front and center every single day. Thank you to our mental health counselors and our social workers. We saw where one of the Parkland survivors, she took her life, Arielle. And then now we're seeing where a Sandy Hook father took his life the other day. So we do understand and we recognize that mental health, a person's being in crisis is so very important. And it's important that they know that they can reach out to someone at any point in time. And there's a person on the other end of that phone or that email or that text that can speak with them about their issue and/or concern and work with them through that. So I just wanted to make those few comments. And I look forward to, I'm getting antsy too, graduation's coming up and I'm always asking where are we? Do, you know, are our kids moving? How are things going and whatnot? But don't want to put too much pressure on them because there are pressures on our students from a number of sources. What we want to do is we want our students to know that we celebrate them each and every day. So thank you all so very much. That's all that I have. And so as we go ahead and allow myself to, as Dr. Corbett, are there any board requests? I think Ms. Eileen had one.
Yes, ma'am. We will look into the possibility of a potential workshop topic, looking at the feasibility of moving the dual, dual-language program into later levels.
Okay, thank you. So what I will do at this time is I will go ahead and we will adjourn our school board meeting. And then we have the opportunity for comments from the public. And so Ms. Ann Semenetti will call those names. Hopefully those that want to make a comment have signed up and we have that sheet ready. Each person does receive three minutes. Again, we would ask, if you can, please refrain from clapping and whatnot. And we will move forward to the next speaker as she calls them. And then following our public comments, we will have our board evaluation. Everything for the good of the order? All right.
Meeting adjourned. Ms. Ann Semenetti?
Board members and Dr. Grego, we have 26 speakers today under general public comments. Our first two are Lenora Faulner and Leslie Walbold.
Good morning, Ms. Flowers and your distinguished school board. I am Lenora Faulner, the voice of every student left behind. Thank you for your service. Tuesday is my day of service, speaking for the children left behind in St. Petersburg and Pinellas Park, focusing on elementary and middle school students, as you advertise 100% success. I consider many schools a world-class mess. Tuesdays, I speak at Pinellas School Board meetings and County Commission meetings at the request of Commissioner John Maroney. I am Florida's Malala Teacher, an eighth-grade chemistry teacher who almost died, a slow death of mold, mildew, and cancer in seven of my lymph nodes. I've been a Florida professional educator for 50 years, certified in biology, chemistry, mathematics, science, health education, middle schools, and the gifted. This is Women's History Month. I've always been a woman in a man's world. I was born 73 years ago at the United States Naval Academy. The aviators arrived in '45. Dad was in graduate school in aeronautical engineering, a Hellcat fighter pilot. I am me three, born January 3rd, 1946, the oldest of 80 million baby boomers. I consider myself spokesperson for the boomers. I was born into education excellence, attended Pensacola Catholic High, University of Florida. Excellence, excellence, excellence. Dad fought for public education, not corporate education, Common Core or charter schools. I did my student teaching on the Space Coast in 1967. My students' parents worked on the Apollo spacecraft. We were the number-one science in the nation. My mentors spent a semester opening all the science, unpacking science equipment for our new school. We even had a weather station on the top. What is 21st century science in Pinellas County? The Pinellas County Science Center in, and it's, was going to be part of a charter school. Who was in charge? I have the 400-page document obtained from Mr. Wolf with the help of Mr. Kupersky. The 21st century is the VAM Value Added Model rubric for teachers. The value-added model for...
Thank you, Ms. Lenora.
The charter schools should be five stars or five stars. Please read it and give it.
Good morning, school board members. My name is Judy McGinnity. We've switched our speaking order due to the nature of what we'd like to bring forth to you today. I am a mother of a student that graduated through the Pinellas County School Systems. I am also a member of St. John's Episcopal Church in Clearwater and a proud member of FAST. On April 8th, 3,000 parents and grandparents from throughout Pinellas County will be coming together to show our commitment to improve our school climate. Superintendent Greco and the entire school board have received invitations to this gathering back in December of 19, of 2018. We are disappointed that after receiving our invitation, school board chair Cook scheduled the Pride Award event on that same evening. Some could come to the conclusion that the school board, school board member Cook may not want to be present to hear the concerns of parents and grandparents in our districts. We are here today to thank our three at-large school board members, Ms. Lantino, Ms. Kane, Dr. Carr, for confirming your attendance to be present on April 8th to show your commitment to improve our school climate. School board chair Flowers, we thank you for responding to our invitation and we understand that you do have to speak at the Pride Awards event. School board members, Ms. Long, Mr. Dudley, Mr. Cook, we encourage you to join us on April 8th. There is no other time when 3,000 concerned parents, grandparents, community members will come together in Pinellas County to hear this information. While there is much left, much work left to be done, there's also much to celebrate on April 8th. You all have taken great steps to, forward by implementing the restorative justice practices in all schools and we want to applaud you for that on April 8th. However, we aren't done yet. Currently, there are huge inconsistencies with how this program is implemented. The teachers need much more ongoing support and we need a way to make sure that all schools are implementing restorative practices properly. The people you need to see are all going, the people you need to see, the people, I beg your pardon. The people need to see you all present on April 8th to know that you care about our concerns and hear that you make concrete commitments for how the implementation of restorative practices is going to improve next year. I look forward to seeing you all there. I'm looking forward to working together with you to make sure that our teachers and students in Pinellas County schools. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to ask that you not clap, please. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Janice Metz and Mike Gandolfo.
Hi, my name is Leslie Walbold. I am a mom of a student...
One moment. Who's supposed to be speaking?
I was supposed to be speaking previously and I, sorry.
We need to go in the order that...
Oh, where she was. Okay.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Janice Metz. I currently live in Clearwater and I am a lifelong educator who has, who is currently a tutor and advocate for a young man who was a junior at Largo High School. This December, we invited all of our school members to our April 8th Nehemiah Action and we were disappointed to hear that they had scheduled the awards evening that night. This is the second time this has occurred that the district has scheduled, had a conflict like this. I would sincerely like to thank our three at-large school board members, Joanne Lantino, Lisa Kane, and Nicole Carr, for committing to attend the Nehemiah Action. The issues that we are discussing are too important for you not to be present to show the community that you care, that you are committed to a high implementation of restorative practices. I look forward to seeing you there to represent our community on April 8th. Please don't disappoint 3,000 people. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good morning once again. Ask any teacher what effective teaching is all about and they will talk about the relationships that need to be built before learning can take place. Many of us remember when the first month of school was dedicated solely to getting to know what makes each student tick and for showing them how much their teacher cares about them. Now it's about pacing guides and testing. In other words, grades and money. Today, public education is infected with a systemic virus that was created in the think tanks of privatizers and profiteers. These are the same people responsible for injecting elements into education that have no business in education. I'm talking about things like fear and intimidation, stress and anxiety, fatigue and exhaustion. They inserted these elements into our everyday lives by a stroke of a pen, one law at a time. They deny teachers' job security, professional wages, and they disrespect the profession. What if, however, the districts, unions, parents, and students all demonstrated their desire in solidarity to support public education? What if we all wore red on Wednesdays for the remainder of the legislative session? And if every marquee in front of every school said, "Wear red for public ed"? What better way to get people talking than being the first district in our state to do a single activity that involved all major stakeholders of public education pulling together to deliver a singular message to whomever cares to listen, demonstrating what it is that we care about, the vital American institution of public education? This is not an in-your-face adversarial move and this is not an act of defiance. There does not have to be any messaging on the shirts, hats, dresses, or any articles of clothing that are worn. Just wear red. Teachers, support, administrators, board members, superintendent, just wear red. It is possible that the legislature will not pay any attention to us, but that's okay. Think of the feeling of community that will be fostered, if only for a short time. When the kids see it, they will want to participate and bringing everyone together for a single purpose in support of one thing can be very powerful and its impact can leave a lasting impression. So I ask that you consider what I said and either way, I'd like to hear from the board or Dr. Grego. At the very least, we have an opportunity to show everyone that although the legislature seeks to divide us, we stand united in our love and support of public education. Remember, Wednesdays are Wear Red for Public Ed days. Thank you.
I can do that. I can do that.
Our next two speakers are Patricia Peterson and Cassandra, Cassandra Harris.
Good morning, everyone. I am Pat Peterson. I'm a member of the Youth Suspensions and Arrest Research Committee of the FAST Justice Ministry. Our research has found that restorative practices is a proven program for successfully reducing suspensions and arrests in our schools. A delegation visited Louisville, Kentucky School District to observe a successfully implemented restorative practices program in a district much the same size and makeup of the Pinellas County School System. Even though we've attended the district's meeting in August, which was a PR event, and even though we read the one-page PR sheet that the district gave out back in January advertising the success of the RP program, we have yet to see a clear plan for ongoing coaching, evaluation, or for a whole school support system. We don't want PR, we want RP. I worked in the school system, Pinellas County School District proudly for 30 years before I retired. I saw mandated programs of many kinds come and go. Most of them were excellent, but after an initial training, we were often left with very little monitoring or support, so success was spotty. We teachers used to call these the flavor of the month. I don't want this to happen to restorative practices in Pinellas County. We are expecting to see all of the school board members present on the evening of April 8th at Tropicana Field to show 3,000-plus teachers, students, and parents that RP is not simply a fad, but something the district is committed to doing for the long term. Thank you for the time.
Good morning, school board panel. My name is Crisandra Harris. I'm a member of Mount Moriah Missionary Baptist Church and a member of FAST. I have three children in the Pinellas County school system. Myself and other parents can see the inconsistency of the use of restorative practice in the district. I see how some schools are really embracing RP, it's working, yet other schools either aren't using it at all or misusing it. Last year, when my son was at John Hopkins Middle School, I would get calls from the administration at least once a week to tell me how much trouble my son was in. He was suspended multiple times. From the experience at John Hopkins, you could think, you would think that my son was just a bad kid who shouldn't be allowed to stay in school. However, this year, he is at the Pinellas Park High School. He's doing great. He hasn't had a single suspension. I have been called by the school two times since the beginning of the school year. One was to tell me there was a problem with my son and that they would be hosting a restorative circle with everyone involved and the administrator to get to the root of the problem. The other was a call to tell me the problem with my son was resolved and everything was okay, and that was it. Not only is it a relief not for me to have to constantly worry about my son, but my son has even told me it's finally nice to feel heard and treated like a human, a human being, now that we have changed school. So there are some places where the restorative practice implementation is going well, but I have another son at Marrows Elementary. I don't think they are doing a very good job of it. Even a teacher at Marrows told our committee that she didn't think the training provided was very good. As a school board, you need to do more to monitor the PR implementation and provide ongoing training and support to teachers during the year. 3,000 parents and community are taking the night off from work, missing other family and community events and activities to be present April 8th. I hope all of you on the school board will rearrange your schedules to be there as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Lantino had a, um, did you have just a comment, not a back-and-forth, but a comment that you wanted to make?
Um, I do have a comment. Um, and, oops.
There you go.
My comment is, this is our first year that we have implemented the restorative practice program. All of our teachers have been instructed in the use of the restorative practice program. We cannot compare this with three years or four years of education that an out-of-state school has had. We are in the beginning stages of doing the restorative practice. I was asked at a FAST meeting, why don't we collect data and go into the schools and have a teacher collect data? There's no money to go in and hire a teacher to collect data. We have to learn as we go and make sure that our children are getting the help that they need. Some children in pre-K, kindergarten, 1, 2, and 3, and 4, and 5, those are the most critical years in our children's lives. And if we don't concentrate in the early elementary schools, what are we going to have when they get to middle school? What are we going to have when they get to high school? So in those formative years in elementary school, that's when the effort really needs to be enforced. We have to pull circles. We have to do, reach out, and we have to make a decision of a teacher whether to do that or not to do that. So I just want to give you an, uh, an eyeballs, excuse me, an eyeballs opinion of how you can perceive three years, four years, five years of a school from out of state compared to what we're doing here in our very first year with all of our teachers who have started with the restorative practice.
Next speaker, please.
Our next two speakers are Kelvin Foster and Cynthia Lippert.
Thank you, dedicated school board members. Listening to what you do out in the community just today lets me be more appreciative what it means to be a school board member. I see that, uh, that many citizens do not see that. They, they vote for you, and you're just, uh, a figurehead. So when we, when the four churches and two temples bring 3,000 people to Tropicana Field, they will be watching the school board and saying, "Oh, that's the people that I elected", and they care about the youth and education of our residents and, and children. So, um, I'm the amazed aunt of two Pinellas County educators. I say amazed because I knew them in their Goth period, and I didn't ever think they would be dedicated teachers who work on the weekend and take money out of their own pocket to make a difference. And they'll be, they'll be with me at the Nehemiah Action on April 8th because they care, and they want to see their school board member, which is Mr. Dudley. I don't think you're going because of your schedule. I hope you'll reconsider, because it's difficult for me to explain to them that they're also in your district, that they will not see their own elected official be there to look at restorative practices, because I discuss with them, would discipline and res, and conflict resolution make a difference in your classrooms? They, they're a high school teacher at Dixie Hollins and at Oakhurst Elementary. One of them teaches autistic children. She is my hero, um, and she thinks it would. She thinks it would make a difference to have some program to get discipline, not take 45 minutes of the school hour and education be 15 minutes. That's what's happening at Dixie Hollins to my, my niece. So I hope you'll reconsider, any of you that can't make it. I know you have an awards banquet. That's got to be important, but this is vital. This is vital. We have some failing schools. We have the Congress or the federal government involved with our schools. There's something that can change, and restorative practices is what FAST thinks can make a difference. We're not pushy, we're not nosy. We want to make a difference in Pinellas County schools. So I hope you will attend the Nehemiah Action. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm chaplain Kelvin Foster. I'm a member of First Baptist of St. Pete. I'm also a member of FAST. I was a volunteer at John Hopkins Middle School for five years as a in-school big brother and a mentor, a take stock in children mentor at Osalia Middle School and Boca Seega High School. This December, we invited the school board members to our April 8th Nehemiah Action. After receiving our invitation, the chairman of the school board decided to schedule an awards ceremony on the same night. This is the second time the district has done this. Today, we want to thank the three at-large members, Joanne Lantino, Lisa Kane, and Nicole Carr, for committing to attend the Nehemiah Action on April 8th at 7:00 PM. School Board Members Flowers, I served in these schools for five years. I know that you have a, you have to represent the school board at the awards ceremony, so you must attend that ceremony. However, I encourage you to show your support for the high-quality implementation of restorative practice that 3,000 members of the community are desiring to see implemented here in Pinellas County.
Our next two speakers are Jennifer Daza and Polly Kraus.
Hi, my name is Reverend Jen Daza. Uh, I am the pastor of Good Samaritan Church in Pinellas Park, um, and I have a son at Bowder Elementary in the VPK program. He's a ESE student, uh, and I also have a daughter who will be in the Orange Grove Kindergarten Program next year and another daughter coming up. This December, we invited all of our school board members to our April 8th Nehemiah Action. And after receiving the invitation, we heard that the school board had decided to schedule an awards ceremony the same night. I remember a couple of years ago when the same thing happened, and I was so disappointed, disappointed for myself, for the other parents and grandparents who are a part of our organization, and all those who will come out on that night because they want to hear from you, because we care about the kids in our community, about our own kids. I've got kids at my church who come from extremely broken homes, and it will make a world of difference for them in school if their behavior is not just reacted to, but responded to, if someone listens and gets to the root of what's going on with them. It'll make a world of difference to my son with special needs if his behavior is not just reacted to, but responded to. I don't expect that we would be where Louisville is right now, but I do expect that in three or four or five years, we will be there when my kid is going to be in elementary school. I live, um, school board member Bill Dudley, I live in, in your district, um, and, and I really hope you will reconsider coming out on April 8th for our Nehemiah Action at Tropicana Field. Thank you.
My name is Polly Kraus. I attend Temple Bene Israel, a reformed Jewish congregation on Beltier Road in Clearwater. This December, we invited all the school board members to our April 8th Nehemiah Action. After receiving our invitation, the chair of the school board decided to schedule an awards ceremony the same night, and it's the second time that this has been done. Today, I want to thank our three at-large board members, Joanne Lantino and Lisa Kane and Nicole Carr, for committing to attend the Nehemiah Action on April 8th at 7:00 PM. School Board Member Carol Cook, I live in your district. I would really encourage you to adjust your schedule to join us on April 8th. It would be nice that you see the number of other members from my synagogue who will be there with me. The issues we are discussing are too important for you not to be present to show the community that you care and that you're committed to a high-quality implementation, and that's the difference we're trying to make, to impress upon you the importance of making restorative practices, not just an implementation that's passed down and taught from teachers who have just learned it, but to be ensured by having professional guidance along the way for everyone. I look forward to seeing you there as you represent our community on April 8th. School Board, I support the later times for schools, for schools to start. I heard that today, and I have to tell you, I had two college, two high school kids who went to school at 7:05. They were up at 5:30 some days to get there early for other things. That's just ridiculous, and especially in an IB program where they're studying until 11 to 12 o'clock at night. And I also support not arming teachers, so, thank you.
Our next two speakers are Mark Clutho and Melissa Gallivan.
Mark Clutho, Largo. This is a lectern, not a podium. Uh, this is, this is sad. You know, I heard one of the first speakers mention climate, but do I ever hear these people from FAST talk about the schools providing high-performance passive solar No. The planet is burning. Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, 200 million people in this country are going to be flooded this year. And cause and effect, the stupid buildings are belching carbon. Amory Lovins wrote in 1991 in Fine Home Building, "If it's not efficient, it's not beautiful." Now, don't you care about your God's green earth? Hypocrites. This chairwoman, what does she say real quick? Uh, and then I hear talk about English learners, language programs. Well, when are you going to get the English language right? Adverb, LY. You should not be sitting on that board. When I was here a while back, there was a wacko saying you shouldn't be teaching the Holocaust. You said, "Mom". You didn't say a word, but you'll correct all kinds of people. You didn't say a word to him. Well, I went down to the Holocaust Museum, and whoa, what? You couldn't say any, they couldn't say anything about that? Yeah. You people are such hypocrites. 12th Armored Division was one of the patches down there. That was the unit my father served in. They were one of the liberators. I'll have more to say. You people are despicable.
Our next two speakers are Leslie Walbault and Ron Hughes.
Hi, my name is Leslie Walbault. I am a mom of a student at Perkins Elementary. I am also a member of Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd in Seminole and a member of FAST. For far too long, our schools have focused on immediately punishing misbehavior with suspensions or arrests. You all know that doesn't work. Sending our children out of the classroom does not encourage better behavior. Rather, it takes them out of their learning environment to be left unsupervised, either at home or in the streets. These suspensions are often seen as a reward for misbehaving students. We applaud the superintendent and school board for making some policy changes that have reduced out-of-school suspensions in the past years, but last year, there were still 10,000 suspensions issued in Pinellas County. That is 10,000 days last year students were not in-school learning. We know that if a student receives even one out-of-school suspension, they are twice as likely to drop out of school. Once a student drops out of school, they are three times as likely to be incarcerated. We do not want our children being victims of the school-to-prison pipeline. The good news is that you, that you all, our school board, found a solution. Other large urban districts are successfully using restorative justice practices, RP for short. RP doesn't just cut down on suspensions and arrests, but instead, it focuses on teaching kids better behavior by restoring trust and communication while holding misbehaving students accountable to victims and their peers. We applaud you for doing the research and adopting this important solution. However, now the hard work begins. Now, we have to actually properly implement RP. Our district claims that every school is doing RP, yet our district is not giving schools ongoing training, coaching, and support to make that happen, and our district isn't monitoring the quality of implementation in each school. I went to Louisville, Kentucky, and saw what a good implementation looks like. Pinellas has a lot of work to do, but it's not too late. We can work together and improve our implementation for next year. I encourage all school board members to be present on April 8th of FAST Nehemiah Action to show parents that you care and are listening to our concerns, and so that we can work together to- together to plan a high-quality implementation next year. We have to get this right the first time. Our children are too important.
Good morning. My name is Ron Hughes. I live in Dunedin. I have two grandchildren at Cypress Woods Elementary School. I commend all of you for being volunteers and committed to public education in Pinellas County. I'm here today to encourage all of you to attend the Nehemiah Action on April 8. School Member Long, I live in your district, and I specifically want to address concerns you raised about the format of the assembly since you have never attended a Nehemiah Assembly at Tropicana Field. No one is surprised or caught off guard at the Nehemiah Assembly. You receive the questions ahead of time. You are given a time to explain your responses, though it is not unlimited about the time. There is no booing at the Nehemiah Assembly. Everyone is greeted with respect. School Member Long, 3,000 people from the county, many of them from your district, are making an attempt to be present on April 8. I hope you will be present to join us.
Our next two speakers are Marty Moore and Joel Rambo.
Good morning, members of the school board and Madam Chair. My name is Marty Moore. I live in unincorporated Clearwater. I am a volunteer at Plum Elementary. I've been volunteering there for four years, and I have a granddaughter who's been going there for four years. And I just want to give you a success story. At where I volunteer, I'm usually in the office. So, I see the students come in, those with problems. I see the six students come in when they go to the nurse, and I see the other kids who are upset or have issues who come in. Plum Elementary implements restorative practices. And when the activities in the classroom aren't successful, those students come down to the office. And when they come in, some of them are, they're loud, they're crying. Some of them have been actually carried in because they're so out of control. But once they get there and additional disciplinary responsible activities are taken place with them, they leave and they don't go back to the classroom. They don't get sent home. They stay there until they are calm, reflective. Their peers come. There's discussion. There's letters of apology written. And they walk out of there restored. They walk out of there with a sense of encouragement. And that's what restorative practices can do. Now Plum, I hear, is regarded as a good school. And it's not because it's got a lot of money. I mean, our school, the Plum District is not a rich district. It's got a good mix of all races and people from all backgrounds. It's got, you know, I think it's like a typical school in your district. But because there is good leadership, and because there is a joint effort, a combined effort, for all of the staff, the teachers, the administration, and even the volunteers who we get training, they come in and there is an atmosphere there of mutual respect and desire to help all students achieve their best. And it's the expectations that make them bring out their best in the students. And that is what a restorative practice type of arrangement can do. And I encourage you to consider that, if it's not in every school, that you use your leadership to make it happen.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board, Superintendent and Board Members. My name is Joel Rambo. I live in Clearwater. I'm part of District 1. I go to church in Clearwater at United Methodist Church called Mount Zion, where Reverend Lee Hall Perkins is a pastor. I'm a member of Faith, Action, and Service Together, FAST of Pinellas County. I came this morning to put accent on the resources that you have to handle a situation that is very important to each one of us. That situation I'm speaking of is that students are being suspended off-campus and sometimes arrested for being disruptive in school activities. The resources that I'm speaking of that you have are the assistant principals, the principal, the teachers, and key administrative personnel who have all gone through classes at different levels called English Composition. In those classes, they found out how to write essays that were argumentative and get their point across, how to write essays that actually were able to get proposals through. And these people that are under your command right now have the resources from those classes to use their communication skills to speak to these young men and women so that these young men and women are heard, they can speak about what their grievances are, and they can make proposals of what to do about the things that they have concerns over. So, I ask you to use these resources to communicate. They've been trained to do so, and it's just a matter of getting them to know how to communicate well with these young people. If they have forgotten how to do so, there's free training to restore those skills that they had to get by in class and to learn how to communicate and get ahead and learn how to talk to people and get their point across. These are resources that I ask you to use, and I thank you for starting the restorative justice process in these schools. I ask you to use this process with a vengeance. Encourage your resources to use it with urgency because these students need to be talked to and put on schedule to finish their classes. And I ask you to attend the event that happens at Tropicana Field on April 8, where we will be talking about this matter and others so that you can know how we feel about it. I thank my supervisor for committing to go. I thank the board person Carr and Kane for committing to go. And I ask that you, 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 and you, come, let us see your face, let us hear what you're thinking about. Tell us what's on your mind in regards to this process. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Keith Walbald and Karen Berman.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Berman, and I have been a member of FAST for over 10 years now. I'm also a member of Temple Beth El in St. Petersburg and have been a mentor at Gibbs High School. My two daughters are the products of Pinellas County Schools, and my youngest, who is in 11th grade, attends PCCA at Gibbs High School. And I am an extremely passionate parent about the quality of their education, not only their education, but the quality of all students' education here in Pinellas County. I want to thank the three school board members, Joanne Lantino, Lisa Kane, and Nicole Carr, for committing to attend the FAST action at Tropicana Field on April 8 at 7:00 PM. I hope that the others who have not committed as of yet will be adjusting their schedules to attend this meeting. The issues that you've heard so far that we are discussing are urgent, and we would like your presence there to show the community that you agree with us on that. We want to make sure that there is an emphasis on the proper implementation of restorative practices, not just the implementation of restorative practices. So, that's really our emphasis. I look forward to seeing you all there to represent your community on April 8. And like we said, there's going to be 3,000 folks there, and thank you so much for all you do.
I'm Reverend Keith Walbald from Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd in Seminole. The students at my congregation attend Seminole Middle, Osceola Middle, Ridgecrest, Morgan Fitzgerald, Dunedin, Bowder, and probably a few other schools that I have left off. And my son attends Perkins Elementary. I'm disappointed to see what seems to be a pattern that once again, an awards ceremony was scheduled on the same night that 3,000 people have committed to come together and show support for public education in our county. Like others, I want to thank the three at-large school board members, Lantino, Kane, and Carr, who've committed to come, thank you for that, on April 8 at 7:00 PM. School Board Member Dudley, I live in your district, so do many of the kids that attend my congregation. These issues that we've talked about, the fact that 10,000 students are being suspended and told that they're bad, is just too important for us not to all show up and be present. It's too important for you not to be there to show the community that you care, that these are not bad kids, but they need a high-quality implementation of these restorative practices. So, I look forward to seeing you there to support our community on April 8.
Our next two speakers are Ed Dickey and Pastor Kathy Walter.
My name is Ed Dickey, and I attend the Shallow Missionary Baptist Church in Largo, which is in District 6. I have two grandchildren that attend Clearwater High School, Ashante Brinson and Destiny Brinson. This December, we invited all school members to our April 8 Nehemiah Action. After receiving our invitation, the Chair of the School Board decided to schedule an awards ceremony on the same night. This is the second time this district has done this. Today, I want to thank our three at-large board members, Joanne Lantino, Lisa Kane, and Nicole Carr, for committing to attending Nehemiah Action on April 8 at 7:00 PM. School Board Member Bill Dudley, I live in your district. I want to encourage you to adjust your schedule to join us on April 8. The issues we are discussing are too important for you not to be present to show the community that you care and that you are committed to a high-quality implementation of restorative practices. I look forward to seeing you there to represent our community on April 8.
Is Ms. Walter present?
Hello. My name's Judy Sarmats. I'm here from St. John's Episcopal Church in Largo, and I'm also speaking for our pastor, Kathy Walter, who had to leave because of a commitment. I have a daughter who teaches in Seminole Middle School, and she and her brother also attended all three Seminole schools, or Seminole schools. St. John's, my church of many years, cares about public education. We provide many supports to Belcher Elementary, our neighborhood school. We participate in PACASAC, Backpack Drive, Christmas gift-giving, Lunch Pals, school Lunch Pals, and we also provide cash donations to classrooms and clothing and supplies when requested by counselors. This last December, we invited all school board members to our April 8 Nehemiah Action. After receiving our invitation, the Chair of the School Board decided to schedule an awards ceremony on the same night. This is the second time the district has done this. Today, I want to thank all three of our at-large school board members, Joanne Lantino, Lisa Kane, and Nicole Carr, for committing to attend the Nehemiah Action on April 8 at 7:00. School Board Member Carol Cook, I live in your district. And Mr. Dudley, my daughter teaches in your district. I want to encourage you all to adjust your schedule to join us on April 8. The issues we are discussing are too important for you not to be present and to show the community that you care and that you are committed to a high-quality implementation of restorative practices. I look forward to seeing you there to represent our community on April 8. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, I just want to share something with you. Because I don't want you to take it negatively, I'm just sharing something with you. I received an email from Kevin Hendrick, who is, I'm sorry, from Heather Rockind on behalf of Secretary, she's the Secretary to Kevin Hendrick, I'm sorry. He's the Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I received the email November 1, 2018, at 10:42 AM. Save the date, all of us, save the date. Pride Awards. That was in November. So, that was before the date that you've been provided by, I assume, Haley, that the information was sent to Pinellas County Schools regarding your event, your FAST event. I was in constant communication with Ms. Semenetti because she received information from FAST, from, it just says respectfully, the FAST Youth Suspension and Arrest Committee. It was no name, but this is the actual letter. It's dated December 17, but we didn't even receive it in our mail, and this isn't like a conspiracy theory, until March 6, 2019. So, I will tell you that we have been in constant communication because it's not just the Pride Awards. This is leading up to graduation time. We have the Maria Ettmans event. The Education Foundation has their event. I'm speaking every single night somewhere this week, and I had eye surgery yesterday so I could barely see. Everybody looks fuzzy to me, but that's a good thing. And so, it's just so many different things going on. So, we're in constant communication. We're trying to get our calendars together. So, when there was no date, I went ahead and said, yes, I will be the speaker at this event because this is what's here. Other persons made their necessary arrangements. I am grateful that there will be representation at FAST. But I also feel like, because we're school board members, we should also recognize these 5th and 6th graders who will be receiving awards based on their educational commitments and standards in certain categories. So, I'm not saying that, you know, there's anything wrong with you all being here. I appreciate that you're here. My pastor, Pastor Clarence Williams, was the one that even brought FAST back to Pinellas County. Your meetings were held in my church. I pay tithes and offering above and beyond, not just 10%, I'm a 15% tither. So, I'm contributing towards FAST, so other members here who churches are members of FAST. But I just wanted to share that with you guys because I did not want us to continue to go throughout the day for you to think that persons arbitrarily, or as some have stated, that it was intentional that the dates were scheduled. Again, Mr. Hendrick's secretary requested on November 1, 2018, at 10:42 AM. He requested... He requested that we attend, and that's when it was set. The letter, it's dated December 17th, so that still would have been after the Pride Awards request, but we didn't receive it until March. So please feel free to come up, share your comments. We didn't take anything away from your time, but I just wanted to share that just for clarity because that information wasn't necessarily accurate, that there was, and I didn't want the day to continue on with anyone thinking that we purposefully scheduled something waiting for your date so we could schedule it on the same date. Okay? So, but continue on. So thank you all. Huh? I'm sorry? Dr. Greco, did you want to say, I'm sorry? No, I didn't see him. My vision is messed up, so.
I too wanted to add that this district books Ruth Eckert Hall a year in advance, and it's not really appropriate to save the date, but we have to book such an assembly 12 months in advance, and we do. So the comments about the Chair scheduling something after the fact, after the letter, I wish he would stop saying that because it's just not true.
And it wasn't Carol, you guys, it was me. I'm the Chair, it wasn't.
And in my opinion, it's disrespectful. In addition to that, the Board in the last workshop recognized the conflict and to their credit, said, how can we divide and conquer? So I would appreciate if you, you're calling out three board members as different than other three, the fact is, is they volunteered to leave the thousands of parents who will be there wondering why their board member is not there also. So there's enough work to go around, and I, for one, would rather work with you than always having to listen to the criticisms and the issues centered around restorative practices. And I will like to ask Madam Chair that both Bob Poth and Ms. Wright speak about the implementation of restorative practices because in addition to some of your comments about the scheduling, and by the way, I just texted my secretary and the other administrative assistants, I'm yet to receive an invitation to Nehemiah, and I'm just going to say, maybe there's something that you need to look into in terms of your scheduling. There might be. It isn't always somebody else, but I have not. And I'm not, that's not a criticism either. But it'd be one thing if I received it, it's another thing if I've never received it. And I, to this date, unless it went into some sort of junk email, which I don't know, I get hundreds of emails a day, but I certainly get yours, and I've yet to receive that invitation. The other option would be to change your April 8th date, too, if you truly want to look at other agencies, too. So all of those options are certainly open, but I would respectfully request that you stop saying that the Board Chair changed the date or did something. We book these things 12 months in advance. The only way we're going to get Ruth Eckert Hall, and we cannot change the date, and there'll be over 2,200 families and children there, also expecting to see our board members present there, too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for being patient while we just shared that. Thank you so very much.
Did not include that. My name is Barbara Wolf, and I am a member of St. Matthew's Parish, and I also have raised two fine young men that went to Osceola High School. They were pride recipients. And I want to thank everybody, Nicole and Joanne and Lisa, for the time you've spent on restorative practices. And yes, we have established there's a schedule conflict. Here's the consideration. My boys also had a friend that was having difficulties in high school, so it was past the age of reas and the younger, and we can still turn our high school students around. And there was a mentoring system at Osceola High School, and it helped this young man. This young man, I am certain would have been arrested and would have had a record. He was very, very bright, and often a lot of these bright kids do get into trouble. He ended up becoming a Navy SEAL, and he was on the team that got Osama bin Laden captured. So I just, the whole thing is, we have a conflict, and the Pride students need recognition, but leave no one behind either. So whatever's on our hearts, or whatever our role is, and Bill Dudley, you're in my area, and I have eight friends that are teachers, and they will be coming along that night, along with a retired superintendent from the Hamptons. But there is inconsistency when I talk to my friends about the implementation, and even in the same school, there'll be a child that will be out at recess and have had a teacher that has gone through it intensely, and then another that hasn't had the same level of a training, and that child will have been influenced and had a negative experience by that other teacher, and luckily, the other one will come in. So it's just a matter of consistency, and the superintendent friend says, I need to know more about how this is being implementation because it's part of a bigger picture, and we need to all understand that. So if we can get information, if we can let people bill, you're cordially invited, and of course, Dr. Greco as well, and apologies for the fact that whatever happened to that invitation, that we do what we need to do on April 8th. So thank you very much.
Our next two speakers are Sarah Rice and Beverly Kelly.
Hello, School Board, I appreciate you so much. I'm Sarah Rice, I live in South St. Pete. Chairperson Flowers, you are part of my district, and I appreciate the work that you've done, and I appreciate the tone that you bring to this meeting and all the issues that have been looked at today. I'm a member of First Baptist Church, St. Pete, and I have a deep concern about the, not only the schools in our, in here and nationally that have experienced violence, but also how all our schools are affected by the violence, the losses to families in our nation. And I have a very strong feeling about restorative practices. I appreciate the beginning, this first year, and I'm here today to thank you for bringing this restorative practices into our district, and also to thank you for the opportunity to speak here and receiving our invitations, our intended invitations for the Nehemiah Action. We have an opportunity to bring a tone and skills and implementation of a program that hopefully will affect the tone of our classrooms, will affect our teachers' sense of resources that are effective, and make the tone of our classrooms in a very, very difficult season and era, one that is that of peacemaking and joining together, and specific ways of looking at conflict resolution, and I just appreciate so much the implementation and your continued support of this program. Thank you so much.
I'm Beverly Kelly. I had three children and one grandchild go through the Pinellas Schools, and they all earned college degrees afterwards, so I'm very proud of them, and I'm a very firm supporter of the Pinellas County School System. Unfortunately, we do have a conflict here, and our problem has always been, we have to wait till the RAS decide what their schedule is before we get into Tropicana. So it's unfortunate because I think we need to have as many school board members as possible out there in front of these 3,000 voters to let them know that you are working on this restorative action, and we see, being here today, that there is a lot going on and that you are interested in continuing. And so we hope that as many as possible can be there to let folks know that we can work together on this. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Lee Hall Perkins and Carla Rolandini.
Yeah, um, yeah, I was, I had my little notes. No, 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 you're good. So since, for those of you that were able to stay, thank you. And what I want, would like for is if Mr. Poth and Area Superintendent, I'm sorry, Bob Poth, and Area Superintendent Pat Wright can come up. Many of you out there know that the Area Superintendents and myself, we went to a meeting quite some time ago in Atlanta that really kind of laid the foundation for this component piece. We brought in a representative, and she was very good. We had several sessions throughout the community. One was at the James Weldon Johnson Branch Library, where I know a lot of members of FAST came, but there was another session that I wasn't able to attend, I think some board members came, to talk about the implementation, or even at that point, just the consideration to implement restorative justice, restorative practice, and look at our disciplinary actions throughout Pinellas County with the intent of keeping students in school, because when they're in a seat, they can learn, when they're not in a seat, they can't learn. And so we embarked upon a journey that took some time, but we have implemented this, we're implementing it countywide, and I would like for Ms. Pat Wright and Mr. Poth to share, if they can, what we're doing as it relates to training, the train the trainers, the continual updates of training so that teachers are getting that, our relationship with PCTA, and their piece in at the whole nine yards. I think I just did it all wrong. You did, you did, you did a great job. Good morning, everyone, Madam Chair, Dr. Greco. It's my pleasure and privilege to talk about restorative practices because, first, let me say that I applaud the interest that everyone has in restorative practices, because it's this kind of interest and this kind of zeal is what we need to cultivate a shift, a shift of practices in our own way of work, from schools to staff to just in the community as a whole. And so to address the implementation process, Bob and I will tell you a bit about it, but Pinellas County Schools is using implementation science, and as we implement and restorative practices versus restorative justice. And so using implementation science, we did some pre-work before that, inasmuch as, for over a year or so, we met with and talked to our principals and our assistant principals, because we have to start at a place of leadership because it's going to trickle down, so that they would have a good understanding of it. And we used the Indiana University Equity Study, and we talked about things with disparate discipline, and we did that for over a year, examining our own ways and our own beliefs. And then we decided, as we moved forward, we began to use the International Institute of Restorative Practices. And as I said, we started off with principals first and assistant principals, and in this our very first year of implementation, we moved it down to the level of the instructional staff, knowing that it's got to move there. And so Bob will tell you more about the science, but just let me give you a few numbers, that in our very first year of implementation right now, because the expectation was, every school will have a staff trained, a staff. So we did the whole entire district, we didn't do 10 or 20 or 30 schools, we did all 140-odd schools. That's been our move this year. And so with that being said, 87% of our instructional staff, that's almost 5,000 teachers, have been trained. 6% still remain registered, and we have ongoing sessions, and we have a few more sessions before the end of this school year. And even with that, we've had folks that are not the instructional staff that have stepped ahead, and support staff, counselors, psychologists, other folk, that have pushed our numbers up to well over 6,500 folks that have been trained, that includes instructional staff and also support folks, i.e. counselors, psychologists, even teacher, you know, assistants. So that's where we're moving, that has been our heavy lift and continues to be, but in this our first year, with the focus on instructional staff, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you, and a good afternoon. We really appreciate you being able to speak on this. And again, we agree with FAST that restorative practices has not only a great potential, but it is the mechanism that we should use to reduce exclusionary practices. I want to talk a little bit about the International Institute of Restorative Practices, and that's the organization for restorative practices, the international organization that we partnered with. It's the same one that was referenced by FAST that Louisville partnered with. They use a slightly different model, but most of it is identical or very similar models. Both were sanctioned by IRRP. One of the differences is, we took a very aggressive approach and said, we're not going to just do it with 10 schools, and Louisville last year did it with 10 pilot schools, this year, they're up to 30, and then they'll move from there. We do, we're doing with all 120-plus schools. And their model has a focus on a train the trainer model, so does ours. And we, we not only, or you all funded, but we trained through IIRP, coming down a contract through them, a train the trainer in every one of our elementary, middle, and high schools. And so, well, I want to say that, and I compliment FAST for going to Louisville, we are in constant contact with IIRP, and we know about the Louisville model. We have adopted many of their practices, we took a more aggressive approach in moving and implementing it in our district. But IIRP supports and evaluates both of us. FAST received a letter from IIRP a while back stating that their support and approval of the approach that we're taking and sanctioned the work that we're doing here. And so I just wanted to make you aware that we are not, you know, there's a word that used to go around, penalizing things, that this is not a penalized approach. This is an International Institute for Restorative Practices approach to implementing restorative practices in Pinellas County School District. Like I said, every school has a certified IRRP trainer with a support team that's the umbrella, or the PBIS team, or the Positive Behavior Intervention Team. That, again, is the same approach that Louisville took, by the way. And so this is another example of that. But every school has a certified, we have a plan, if a certified teacher, we're going into the transfer period, happens to move, we have already got a plan in place this summer to get another certified trainer onboard, and so we are constantly looking ahead, not that, not everything is perfect, but there's implementing training, not just the initial implementation that the train the trainer did with their schools with the 12 hours towards the beginning of the year, but it's been ongoing, and there's already plans for next year's training and part of implementation. So this is the initial implementation year, and I want to thank Ms. Latino for mentioning that in one of her statements, that we are using implementation science. This was something that IIRP supported and was encouraged. As a matter of fact, our implementation guide, we not only printed for the train the trainer, but we gave to every teacher in our district. And also, IRRP received a copy of it, and had been given feedback on it. But this year, the first four benchmarks for restorative practices were the ones that were the first phase, and next year, the 19, 20-year, will be our second phase, it's a two-year implementation process. But I just want to, very briefly, and I know I'm going on, the four benchmarks that we are focused on this year and will be achieved in total by the end of this year. Benchmark one, there is a common understanding of what restorative practices is and why restorative practices are being implemented at the school level. Benchmark two, foundational structures to support restorative practices implementations are in place, and that's what we're focused on this year. Benchmark three, a method of collecting and analyzing data is developed. And benchmark four, use of restorative language, culture, and practices are in development. There's three more benchmarks, and those are the ones that we'll be implementing next year to complete the total full implementation. to complete the total full implementation. I know that Mr. Gandolfo was here from PCTA, I believe he probably had left, but...
He left.
I did want to mention that this is not just a, a district initiative.
Right.
Uh, PCTA is in partnership with us on this. Their Human Civil Rights Committee, uh, which Ms. Wright and I attend. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting Thursday night. They, they are, they have embraced this and are doing a lot of our training of our registered and onboarding, um, teachers as they come onto the district. So, it's, if you came onto the district in November, or December, or January, uh, it's not like you have to wait another year. We get you right then. And, uh, and PCTA has been a huge part in, in supporting that. So, it's a, it's a collective support.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of the gentleman, he's come and spoke.
Brett Robinson.
Brett Robinson.
Yes.
He went to Louisville.
Yes.
And so, while Louisville is a couple of years ahead of us, we're right on point with our, with our implementation, uh, timeline. And, uh, also, in addition to that, we, it, we can know that it's continuing, ongoing work. And even as we bring on, um, new teachers to, or, or new staff, but particularly teachers, for our Embrace Pinellas effort, we already have a slot on that timeframe to introduce, uh, restorative practices. So, it's ongoing, it's never-ending, because you don't get to a place and you stop. It's, it's a, it's a belief work that we all have to continue to, to, to invest in.
Yeah. And, um, I, uh, I encourage, um, the continued support. And I know that we're moving forward on it. And I would, um, I would also ask, I always do this at the end of anything, if you have a moment, if you haven't, for those of you that are in the audience, if you haven't already done so, please, if you have 3,000 members, that's 3,000 volunteers and mentors in our schools that can partner with some of the students who may not have that support at home. And we do have some really wonderful organizations and groups. We have our, um, Parent Academy and things like that. But there is nothing like having a mentor, um, that can have lunch with that student, that can sit down and help them with their homework, that can talk to them about things that may be going on in their life, giving them some encouraging words. It may be the only positive affirming, encouraging words they, they get. But if you have not already done so, I would implore and ask you, by all means, please, sign up as a volunteer or a mentor, because that also helps to curtail some of the behavior because they want their mentor and volunteer to be proud of them when they come in and see them. So, we'd love your help, um, in that area as well. Thank you so much for everyone, and thank you, Dr. Grego.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to... Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go, and then...
I, I just want to conclude that with, um, I think sometimes the seven of you are being... Each and every one of you, when we started this process, this journey, to perhaps do one of the largest, most aggressive implementations of restorative practices in the country, we co-presented even in the Council of Great City Schools, and Louisville was there with 10 schools of piloting, and we told them we were going to attempt to pilot 140 sites, and they were amazed, and it was a crowded room. So, I would, um, be remiss if I didn't say to each and every one of you, thank you for your support, both financially and all of the other support that comes along with that to implement one of the more aggressive, um, implementations of, um, restorative practices. And I would continue to, as, as you say, said, Chair Flowers, that our community needs to learn a little bit about what we're doing in, in terms of, of how you can help us and we can partner together. Um, and I want to thank the PCTA and many other organizations that are coming on. So, we come on and partner, not in a critical tone, but rather in a "how can I help" tone, because I want to say to you, it would have been a lot easier to address 10 schools at a time, and I'll see you 10 years down the road. And we, we thought this was so important that even if there's some stumbling by trying to roll out a larger project, that we undertake this initiative. This is perhaps, under my watch, is the largest initiative we've tried to undertake. And so, uh, there is no reason to suspect that this isn't important. We wouldn't be spending the kind of time, resources, and energy each and every day. Every single principal's meeting I have, every month, I highlight, and we have principals speak about restorative practices in their schools. And no other thing gets that type of platform. So, if you have something to say on April 8th, I would encourage you to, to state the support that the Pinellas County School Board has and the Superintendent for Restorative Practices, and we look forward to your continued support of the implementation. Thank you.
School Board Member Long?
Yes, um, back in July, very beginning of July, four of our trainers, our main trainers from PCTA called and asked for a meeting with Dr. Grego, Mr. Poth, Pat Wright. Within two days, Dr. Grego, Ms. Wright, Mr. Poth, and myself, the four main trainers, and Mike Gandolfo, met. We had about a two-hour discussion. We listened to their concerns. Mr. Poth and Ms. Wright went one by one with every concern. We developed a plan for every concern. There have been meetings since then. I have not attended them. It's more between the union and the trainers. But I constantly talk to Ms. Wright and Mr. Poth about how it's going. And there is wonderful conversations and collaboration between the units that are implementing this. And I think it's very important that you know that even before it was rolled out, the main individuals were there already listening to the concerns and working on solutions. The book that Ms. Wright held up, I received a copy that day. It is phenomenal. I, myself, am using restorative practice when I visit schools and when I do my community town meetings in my area. You need to practice at what you preach. And if I expect teachers to do it, I'm doing it myself. But I, I want to thank Ms. Wright and Mr. Poth, you are doing a wonderful job. I know you are working with our teachers and our staff. And please continue with the lines of communication. Thank you.
And I'll just wrap it up by saying, it's a work in progress. So, we're not saying we're perfect. So, don't, you know, please don't take it as we're saying we've, like, conquered, you know, everything in it. We're not saying that. Um, we are saying that we are implementing, we are training, we are learning, and then we're re-implementing. It's kind of like, um, when you go through your phases of development, you're storming, norming, performing, and then you sometimes go back to storming, and then you move back to performing and back and forth. So, it is a work in progress. Um, and we will continue the work in progress because we desire that students get an education, not incarceration. And the way to do that is to find other ways to be able to communicate with them and their families because we need that support. If they're learning it within our halls, we would like to also have the support of the family, which is where the Parent Academies really, uh, come into focus. I'm speaking at a Parent Academy, um, that'll be at John Hopkins, and it will cover the elementary schools in that surrounding area. Um, so, it's a learning process, so we're not perfect. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, we're implementing it with fidelity, that we do have room for growth, and we receive that, and we're moving in that direction. And we, again, appreciate your support, your advocacy for our students and for our families and our communities. And again, um, please join us, volunteer, men, serve as a mentor. We'd love to have you. We, we can't do it without you. All right? So, thank you all so very much for coming. Thank you, each and every person, for your comments. We appreciate you. Have a great day. Drive safe.